City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded May 15, 2023.
Call this meeting to order. I have seven o'clock. This is a regular common council meeting. Today is May 15. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Christensen.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keimer.
Here.
Zerazua.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Lassans.
Here.
Niebon.
Here.
Schuda.
Here.
Lang.
Here.
Fischler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Everyone is here, so we do have a quorum. I'm going to announce it again because we got a few people coming in. We are limited to 49 people in this room. There are 49 chairs. There's not a chair available in this room. You'll have to go to the overflow room, which is the next door down on your left. They have the audio and video there as well. If you register to speak, we'll give you plenty of time to come in. It's just the other side of this wall. All right, if you would all please join me in our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do want to point out that we have a very special guest with us this evening. Lindsay Stiff is this year's poppy princess, and she's right up front. And in just a moment, she is going to be talking to us a little bit about the poppy, what they mean, and do our annual reading of Flanders Fields. No?
Would you like us to?
Isn't that November?
We're going to do Flanders Fields then, right? No? What are we doing? We're going to do something. We're going to do a speech prepared about the poppy.
Perfect.
Is it the other in November, right?
No. No, it's usually this one. But that's okay. If anybody wants to hear Flanders Field, call my office. I'll read it to you. Seriously, if you haven't read the poem, you should. It's very moving. But typically, we do that with the poppy princess. That's okay. We're good.
I like something different.
But I do have some opening comments. Lots of events coming up. Summer's here. Weather's getting great. We've got all sorts of things going on in our city. Our Memorial Day services are coming up on Memorial Day. That starts, I believe, at 10 o'clock at the bandshell. And we're also doing the dedication of our hometown heroes banners that day as well. We have our Pride Festival, Flag Day on June 14th, Juneteenth, Riverfront Rendezvous, Levitt Amp Series Music on Thursday nights, Notes at Night on the Square on Wednesdays, and a whole lot more things going on. These are all family events, but you decide if it's for your family, not me. I'm proud of each and every one of those events, and I personally try and attend them all. Ask my wife. She actually enjoys that. I don't expect you to enjoy all of the events. Heck, you don't even have to like them. And if you don't like them, here's the beautiful part, you don't have to go. Also, as parents, they can decide whether or not they want their children to attend. People have used the phrase recently, "our children." It's for "our children." But it's not our children. It's someone else's children. And of course, I'm not entitled to tell you how to raise your children, just like I don't expect you to tell me how to raise mine. That's up to the individual parents to decide. If you want to teach your kid to go to Hunter's Safety and go hunting, that's up to you. My beliefs shouldn't matter one way or the other. And if I choose not to send my kid to Hunter's Education or a Little League game where they have a beer tent, I don't do that. That's my right as a parent. And you don't get to tell me how to raise my kids. I won't tell you how to raise yours. The bottom line here is that I don't get to judge you, your parenting skills, or anything that you choose to enjoy. But you don't get the right to judge me either. God can judge me, and I'm okay with that. Enjoy life. It's really just so harder, it's so much harder in life to hang on to that much anger. And if you really, really need something to be angry about, call me and complain about potholes. I can live with that. Just be nice to each other. So, we have an item on the agenda for persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. Is there anybody who would like to speak on that that has not signed up yet? Fran, that was right at the beginning. All right. No, no, no. You have to sign up.
I did.
Oh, that's all I was asking. I just need to know if anybody wants to speak but has not signed up. You signed up, you're good to go. So, with that, barring any objection from the council, I'd like to make two shifts in the agenda tonight. One, I'd like to have Lindsay do her presentation first. And two, I would like us to consider moving item number 15 in place of item number eight and shift things down. That's putting the Boys and Girls Club lease agreement right after the consent agenda. Are there any objections from council to doing either of those? Perfect. Lindsay, I want to join you at the lectern, all right? I'll be there for moral support. How about a big round of applause for Lindsay, our poppy princess? I'll sit down. McCurey can come up. Proud of you. You're a poppy princess. This is a big deal.
You're the first person to pick me over the other.
That's not exactly true.
That's not true.
I can't see. You want me to read it, too? Good evening. My name is Lindsay Stiff. I am here tonight to address you as the 2023 American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Princess for Stevens Point. If you have attended city council meetings around Memorial Day in the past or attended a city Memorial Day service, you may already be familiar with the idea of a poppy princess. But if you haven't, don't worry. I'll explain all this royalty to you in a few minutes. First, a little bit about me. I am currently in seventh grade at Ben Franklin Junior High, and I like to keep busy. I swam for junior high and YMCA teams, and I run track for Ben, too. I'm a percussionist in the band, and I have been in many Playhouse Theater productions. I have been a Girl Scout since kindergarten and a lifelong member of American Legion Auxiliary, and that's for real. My grandma signed me up as soon as I was born. As a member, as a member of the auxiliary, I have learned so much about the sacrifices of our military veterans and their family, which is why I continue to be involved. I am currently serving as the honorary junior president for the American Legion Auxiliary Department of Wisconsin. My role in the auxiliary, both as junior president and as your local 2023 poppy princess, is to raise awareness for our organization while reminding the public to honor and serve our veterans. As junior president, I recently hosted a fundraiser to support the National Veterans Creative Arts Festival to help veterans improve their mental and physical health throughout the arts. But I'm not here to tell you about that. I'm here today to remind you about Memorial Day and the time of our remembrance and reflection. Veterans Day is to honor our living veterans, and we don't want to forget about them. But Memorial Day is specifically about remembering the veterans that are no longer with us, especially those who have died while serving our country. But why am I the poppy princess? Many of you have heard the poem "In Flanders Field", written after the battles of the First World War by Physician Lieutenant Colonel John McCray. It's a poem about poppies growing in the battlefields, now serving to remind us of the living sacrifices of our freedom. But do you know why the poppies were growing so abundantly in those battlefields? Soldiers often carried poppy seeds with them in battle. They were used to help alleviate the stress and pain of war. While the soldiers died on the battlefield, the seeds landed in the soil. The bombs tiled up the fields, and the bloods of the soldiers added nitrogen to the soil, creating the perfect environment for the poppies to grow. The American Legion distributes papers poppies around Memorial Day for everyone to wear in remembrance, and a tradition started by Moana Michaels in 1918. When you wear a poppy this year, please take a moment to reflect and give thanks for the sacrifices made by our veterans. If you have received a poppy this year, could you do me a favor and tell... If your child receives a poppy this year, could you do me a favor and tell them a little bit about what the poppy represents? Thank you for your attention today. I would also like to thank Mayor Wiesa for continuing our city's tradition of declaring the Saturday before Memorial Day as Poppy Day. If you are out and about on Saturday, May 27, and you see an auxiliary member handing out poppies, please take one and wear it over the weekend. And if you don't mind donating to our local Veterans Assistance Fund, we appreciate that, too.
Thank you very much, Lindsay. It's always great to see young people getting involved in all the different things that are available in our community. Right now, we're going to go to persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. McKenna, you want to bring the slips up here? If you signed up for an agenda item, we'll call you when that agenda item is up. And you got them in numerical order? Yes?
Yes.
Perfect. So, we will go to Keith Kudrowski. He's in the other room.
In the overflow.
He's coming. Keith and I have an understanding now. He's going to be respectful as much as he can. Right?
Yes, sir.
Always respect, as much respect as I get. Keith Kudrowski, thank you all for letting me be here today, and thank you to Lindsay for understanding the importance of our veterans, because too many people nowadays don't get that. So, I know that a lot of people are going to talk on some other items. I'm going to forego because I know they'll cover that. I jokingly call this the city clown show. Now more than ever, as I watch you try and give 14 acres of prime real estate to another government entity, you can't find anything better to do with prime real estate in downtown. That's how you're going to save our downtown. It's beyond me. It's beyond me that whoever's our city planner cannot find somebody to go into the Shopko building. You say the people who needed a courthouse need a courthouse close by. The people who can't get around, they need a grocery store downtown. Trader Joe's, Shopko, wide open. I don't get how you can't fill them buildings, but that's pretty much all I have to say on that. Like I said, I don't see how you can give this land to them. Let them go out there where they're ruined as well. You guys who moved out, Boys Club, Boys Girls Club needs space. Here we are, they're right next door. Give them this space. Take the police station back downtown where they were. And I think that's a good fit for there, and you still have some extra property left to bring in some businesses. Surely, there's a business bigger than that you can attract here. You bring in a whiskey plant, a distillery, you can't get something better than a distillery? I mean, I know we need to try and soothe the pain that you put us through, but come on, you got to find some better business. Who is the city planner? I'm not even a college grad. I've only done some college. I know I could make proposals to lure somebody to come to this beautiful city, because you say it's a beautiful city, and it is. I didn't move back from out east to here because it wasn't a great place. So, I'll let the others talk on the events that are coming up, and thank you for your time. And that was very respectful today, Michael.
You absolutely were. And we agree on something. It's a beautiful city. Just a point of clarification, though, we're not looking at giving anyone 14 acres of prime real estate. Those are all municipally owned. Anyway, almost six of that is county-owned in the city, and the streets that we talked about potentially closing. There is a grocery store downtown, the Market on Strong's. There's a second one that's on Fourth Avenue called the Co-op. They sell everything you're going to need. And we are working with a developer on the Shopko site. Stay tuned for more. Thanks, Keith. Fred Kelkoffin.
Do you want to say who's next, in case there are any...
Sure. On deck is Pam Lloyd. Thank you.
Fred Kelkoffin. I live on Ridge Road. I lived Stevens Point all my life. There's things going on here. It bothers me. Okay, we talk about all this development. Okay, Applebee's is gone. There's going to be another restaurant gone in a few more weeks. And the city council's hell-bent on these bicycle lanes. People don't like them. The bicycles aren't safe. Today, I was behind a bicycle. He had to be in the middle of the road. He gets to a stop sign. If I go through it, I get a ticket. He goes wheeling right through it. The streets in town, you're talking about all this development. Why don't you just do regular maintenance on the streets? It's a mess. There's a lot that needs to be done here, but it's not getting done. That's not all I got, but I'm going to quit.
Thank you, Fred. Pam, you're up. Jack Elziger, you're on deck. Pam Lloyd?
She's in the restroom.
Okay.
She's in the restroom. Could I?
Sure. We'll skip ahead. Jack, I know Jack's here. I saw him earlier.
He's in the back.
In the room. And then we'll put Pam on deck.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Jack Elziger, live in Town Hall. My wife and I sent emails to every city council member and the mayor about the Kitty Drag Show scheduled for Pifner Bandshell on June 10, asking what you're going to do about this grooming of children, which is a sexualization of children. To our email, we received only three replies. One stated in a quote, "Thank you for your email. When the Pride event had been approved in the Public Policy General Government Committee, law enforcement was present at our meeting. I had asked law enforcement if they had any concerns, and the answer was no." Unquote. My question is, what does that reply have to do with the question that was posed to you? So, I will repeat. What are you going to do about the sexualization of children at the Two Kids, Four Kids Drag Show? Parents and grandparents around the community await your answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Lloyd? And Leah Wolf? I think it's Leah. On Esker Road. Last name is definitely Wolf. You're on deck.
Do I have to state my address?
I think we have it on here as 509 West Harding.
Yes.
So, we're good.
Yes. I only have a statement in the form of a question. Ask not what children... Why children should see drag shows? Ask why drag queens want to audience of children, want an audience of children. It's just like, it's just something to think of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it Leon? Leon. Next up is... Wow, you guys should be doctors. Oh, it's Colin. Sorry, the letters blended together. Colin, you're on deck. Leon, you're up.
Thank you. On the same issue as the previous two presenters, the Kitty Drag Show proposed for June 10 at the Pifner Bandshell. Mayor Wiesa, in his opening remarks and in a video he posted, said he's received some pushback on this. And then he tried to alleviate that by saying that everyone has a right to raise their kids the way they want to. I agree with that to a certain extent. As witnessed by what's happening here today, we are a community, so we care about each other. And some things are just wrong. And who's to say what's right or wrong anymore? It's a very blurred issue. People can discount what the Word of God says in the Bible. They can even ridicule it. They have that right. We have that will. But the Word of God stands above man's opinion and speaks very clearly on this issue. It contains eternal truth, and the truth that we're trying to hash out here has been the truth since the beginning of time. When it comes to the Word of God, and I quote our Lord, "It's easier for heaven and earth to pass away than for one stroke of a letter of the law to fail." The letter of the law he's talking about is the Word of God, and the Lord Jesus said that. He also said in John 5, "An hour is coming in which all who are in the tombs will hear his voice and will come forth: those who did the good deeds to a resurrection of life, those who committed the evil deeds to a resurrection of judgment." That's everybody. But I appeal to those of you in government. The Bible also places a special responsibility on each of you. It says in Romans 13:1 that "every person is to be in subjection to the governing authorities; for there is no authority except from God, and those which exist have been appointed by God." So, your presence here gained through the votes of your constituents is also ordained by God. Even Pontius Pilate, his authority was ordained by God, and he abused that authority. Romans 13:6 says, "Rulers are servants of God, devoting themselves to this very thing." And finally, Jesus said, "It is inevitable that stumbling blocks come, but woe to him through whom they come. It would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck, and he were thrown into the sea, than that he would cause one of these little ones to stumble."
Thank you, Leon. Colin? On deck, we have Sandra.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Colin Klobishop, and I'm speaking about the event coming up in June, the Pride thing at Pifner Park or Bucal Park, wherever it is. And I'm against it, but I'm going to tell you why. When I first heard about it, I thought about this, the Constitution. They have the right to be there unless they harm somebody. Then they don't. Even what the mayor said about the parents, she let their parents decide what their children do, and that is the case. But let's think about COVID, what we went through. A lot of people, they were vaccinated, right? They were told that it was a good thing. Parents allowed their children to do that. Has anybody seen some of the results that came out from Pfizer recently about the shots?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We were misled, right? And we might be misled with this event that's coming up with our children. And on the surface, it looks like, yes, it's constitutional. They have the right to do so. But what's the underlying problem that this is going to create? So, therefore, is it really appropriate that we're going to let kids go to shows that promote early sexualization of them? Will we have pedophilia in our community later because of this down the road? And I'm not saying tomorrow, three, four, five years down the road. So, we should really look at this as a community, what direction we want to go. And again, these people that want to do this have the constitutional right to do so, unless they harm somebody. And that is the biggest question that we all have to consider. Are they going to harm our children? And I say it's our children because guess what? I'm an old guy with gray hair, and I want to retire. And I want these children to come up and take my job so I can retire. So, I didn't birth these kids or not their parent, but yet I'm in a society with them. So, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, too. Anything that happens that is illegal in violation of the laws of man will be dealt with appropriately. This is the third year the event is happening. Haven't had any issues. Sandra, you're up. Carrie on deck.
Thank you. What has happened to the morals, the moral compass that we have allowed a drag show here coming up, which grooming and sexualization and normalizing abnormality for our children in our community? I feel we've lost the ability to recognize what's abnormal and what's unnatural. Have we looked the other way because we're afraid to stand up for what is good and what is right? Or maybe we think we are powerless to do anything about anything that affects our families. My compass and my heart cries out and said, "This is terribly wrong." Surely, each member in this council has that spark in their heart and knows that grooming and sexualizing and normalizing activity like this is unhealthy. It doesn't matter if it's my granddaughter or your niece or nephew. They're still children. They are our children. So, I ask the council members to dig deep in their compass and stand against this activity, the ideology that's right here in our backyard. Children are vulnerable, and we, parents, grandparents, neighbors, and citizens, are here to protect the children, no matter who they are. And as elected officials, you too are meant to be their protectors. Children have the right to be children and to figure out who they are, not hear this at a park. So, I'm boldly asking the city council to shut this park activity down and put aside this ideology, which will send a message, will send a message to the citizens of Stevens Point, that when it comes to children's emotional health and well-being, your compass is pointing towards the very best for them. I see if no action is taken, that too will shine a light on where your loyalty lies. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, and then Matthew Malek. I did note something here, too. We had a few people that signed up for item number five. We do not allow discussion on presentations. But I'm going to guess that you probably want to talk about the consideration of the items that are on the agenda as a result of the Housing Task Force. So, I'll allow that, but we won't do any discussion on the presentation itself. I apologize. Carrie, you're up.
No problem. Carrie Plover, I am the first to uphold parental authority. But there are a lot of things in our society that children just aren't allowed to do. They're not allowed to get a driver's license. They're not allowed to join the military. The last I looked, drag queens, was a sexual fetish. We need to protect our children, and they are our children. I want to know where the line is. How far do we keep going? I think we've crossed it. I think this firmly crosses the line into grooming our children. I ask that this council kindly let the performers know that their services, their entertainment, is no longer needed, and they don't need to come back ever again. I don't know if any of you have seen them, seen their videos. I watched one of them. Shaking his fake breasts is an offense to me. It's a caricature of women. I believe that he was taking dollar bills from children. Please kindly let them know that our community does not uphold that kind of entertainment for children, because adults, that's something else. Children, it's our duty to keep them wholesome until they can make their own decisions. Thank you for listening. Good luck with your decisions. Good night.
Thank you. Matthew Malek, and then Ann Walkus, you're on deck. Ann, I need your address. I don't have that here, though.
Well, thank you for letting me speak here this evening. I believe the things we've already... I believe the things we've already have heard is building a strong case for decency in our community. And I'm here tonight to address my concern for the Point Pride event, which is Saturday, June 10th, 2023, two kids, four kids. I've spent time reading the post put out by Point Pride, saying that they have received backlash from those opposing opinions about Pride and about the LGBTQIA+ community. They said that the opening event, or Storytime, is a segment of the day-long Pride event focusing on the individual's right to express their own identity, hosted by two prominent young self-actualized performers in Wisconsin, presented in a way that will be appropriate for all people of all ages, free from suggestive outfits or movements. Now, as a concerned citizen, I'm not here because I'm hateful or homophobic, transphobic, or anything along those lines. I'm here because I'm concerned about sexual content of any kind, whether it's heterosexual or LGBTQIA+. Looking at the post on the Stevens Point Pride Facebook page from last year's event, I don't believe the acts are developmentally appropriate for young children. The advertisement says, "Two kids, four kids. We can agree or disagree all day about what is appropriate and at what age." On the Pride Facebook page, some of last year's events showed grown adults kissing young children on the stage. I ask you if that is appropriate. At what point does it become a matter of a violation of the law? As a reputable pastor and founder of a childcare center here in Stevens Point and a K-12 school in this community for nearly 40 years, we have watched many trends and cultural changes. This one is very difficult for me just to sit back and watch without feeling compelled to protect what young children are being exposed to. As I said earlier, that doesn't matter if it's heterosexual or any type of sexual preference. Adults can make those choices, but as a family-friendly event, why does sexual content have to even be a part of what we allow for young children? Even the Pride event promoters said, and I quote, "There should be a separate time of the day where parents can choose to have their families come and enjoy the event without worry of adult themes," unquote. However, the pictures on Facebook from last year's event shows children watching the shows that were not appropriate for young children, yet young children were present. And so I would really like this council to consider allowing young children to participate in this kind of event. What safeguards are in place that will protect our children? And possibly parents that aren't aware of this event taking place, that are on the Green Circle Trail or just happen to be in a park, that happen to come by. I'm asking that we do our best to protect children in our community. And what was said earlier, I know my time is up, in Matthew 18 talks about offending a child, and the consequences are very heavy for that from a biblical standpoint. And this is the third year of the event, but this is the first year that it's been advertised for children. I don't recall seeing that before. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Malik. The Storytime was at the previous events. Ann Walkush, you're up next, I need your address, though.
9321 Luden Vista Road.
And where is that?
That's Rapids, but it's Rapids County. So talking about the kiddie drag show as well, if you had little kids, I'm sure we all, do you all have kids? Is this what you want for our kids? Is this, I mean, do you really want to expose your kids at a young age to go through this? It's hard enough for a kid to deal with normal stuff. It's just, okay, so what good does this do? What is your end goal? What good will this come, will come from this? I just was writing random stuff. If you want story hour, then tell stories, read books, but do it normally. You don't need these people influencing our children. Why are the drag queens doing this? What is their agenda? What's in it for them? 10 years down the road, what will this all look like? 10 years down the road, I mean, think 10 years ago, we thought, I don't know, I just, just think about that. I think they're too young to be exposed to this type of a lifestyle. They shouldn't have to choose. It's hard to be a kid. Let them go outside and play instead of wondering if they should be a girl or a boy. If we accept this, what next? Everyone, I'm copying this from someone else, everyone has a right, but some things are just wrong. Copying this, this is crossing the line. Please cancel this event.
Thank you. Mark Beistrum from Plover, you're up next, and after that, Ray Kotowski from Junction City, you're on deck.
Thank you. I'm Mark Beistrum from Plover, and very much in line with what some of the other speakers have said. It just makes me very sad to see how hard it is for a kid to be a kid these days in so many ways, without being confronted by ideas and actions that they're not psychologically ready to confront yet or to deal with. And unfortunately, some adults are very willing to let them experience those things. But for the rest of us, a big red flag goes up when we see that kids will be exposed to a day of drag shows and other LGBTQIA+ entertainment in a city park. Stevens Point Pride, June 10th at Pifner Park, it's an event that children are being drawn to attend with bounce houses and other things that are meant to attract children. And their event poster and website lists as family-friendly entertainment, a drag Storytime for kids hosted by two 17-year-olds. Now, the rest of the day features other drag show events that they give a rating as PG or M for mature, but again, all in a wide-open public space, in full view of families and young children who might be in the park for other reasons. And I hope we can all agree, as other speakers have said, that there is still such a thing as inappropriate sexual content for kids. Can we just come together around that common sense idea? Not fighting as conservatives versus progressives, or gay versus straight, or anything else, but simply together as parents, as grandparents, and as ordinary human beings who don't want our kids exposed to inappropriate sexual content of any sort of orientation from any group in a public space. That's what our children need and deserve. They need that protection from us and from our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Kotowski from Junction City, you're up next, and then Don Bukowski.
Yes, hi, Ria Kotowski.
Oh, Ria, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Speaking on the Two Kids, Four Kids event in the park. Mayor, as you know, if you are a teenager, you're not gonna be with your parents, right? There's all kinds of teenagers that are walking in the park without their parents' knowledge maybe that this event would be even happening. So when you say that, you know, it's a parent's choice, you know, they're bringing their kids, well, some people, yes, but teenagers aren't gonna come with their parents all the time. They're, you know, biking, skating, walking. So that was one of my points. My other point is, you know, I don't have, I mean, an event in the park, I understand it's their constitutional right. However, it's different because of the sexualization. I mean, you wouldn't go and invite women from the gentlemen's club to come and speak to children, you know, at a story hour and have these kinds of shows. And so what I'm saying is, regardless of the sexual orientation, it just, to me, it just seems wrong to have an event solely based on sexuality. So respectfully, I think that it should be reconsidered, you know, to be held in a park, in a public place. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Bukowski, and on deck is Fran McRough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for allowing me to have this time. I live at 1845 Edgewood Lane, Town Hall, and I've lived in the Stevens Point area for 46 years. I think I want to go in the direction of the goal, what is the goal of this movement? Secondly, again, I do not support the drag queen story hour at the Pride Fest. The sudden omnipresence of drag queens seeking to entertain young children is not simply a natural evolution toward tolerance and inclusion, it is a tactic. As therapist Paula Reinhardt explains, destructive political agendas are behind the glitter, and children are simply the means to advance extremism. Drag queen story hour is marketed as family-friendly entertainment you'd want to take your children to see, but the ideology behind drag queen culture merits a much deeper look. What used to be a common comedy sketch men in drags has become a vehicle for sexual politics that tends to upend normals around human sexuality and the nuclear family. It is important to grasp the dark intent behind this growing trend. Drag queens in the United States seek to introduce children to a new way of seeing sex and sexuality. We should think of drag queens as the foot soldiers for an ideology that deconstructs normative human experience, beginning with the breaking in the binary of male and female. The concept of family becomes just as fluid and moldable as that of gender. Once society is liberated from traditional norms, then civilization can be rebuilt from the ground up. A new sort of goodness and equality will magically appear. One with gender and sexuality can be molded and fashioned according to the individual desire. The most disturbing goal of the drag queen culture is its determination to deconstruct childhood, robbing children of the innocence that protects their maturing process. Drag culture invades this protective space by pushing sexual content on children who developmentally would be baking cupcakes or playing soccer. The goal of drag queen culture is to stimulate a queer imagination in kids by bringing queer ways of knowing and being into the education of young children. Drag is a useful tool in reformulation children's relationships with sex and sexuality. Healthy adults consider childhood a time for climbing trees, piano lessons, and neighborhood friends. Children are neither hormonally nor psychologically inclined to explore their sexuality. They don't naturally worry if they are non-binary. They must be prime, stimulated, dragged in that direction. When a child can't resist, when a child can't rest in the pleasure of being a boy or a girl, when the foundations are being deliberately shaken, is it any wonder so many kids are overwhelmed? This contrasts mightily with the classic Christian understanding of personalhood, in which your deepest identity transcends time and place. You belong to the God who created you, male or female, in His image. This isn't about tolerance and inclusion, it's about adult activists using the goodwill surrounding gay and lesbian social movements as cover for advancing ideologies and turning children into shock troops for their gender revolution. This is indeed a method to the madness and an end goal being served. Just how far have we gone morally? How much have we declined? Drag queens, pride calls, pole dancing in public? What's next? Finally, I just want to say this, and thank you for the extra time. My daughter's been a high school English teacher for over 20 years. Her students' number one issue is they don't know their identity anymore. It's a crisis. The second is mental illness in high school, depression, anxiety. What have we created? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate it. Fran, you're up, and then Ryan McCaffrey on deck.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Okay, so I at first wanted to ask about if there was gonna be sidewalks put in on Lamburg Avenue, since y'all are gonna be doing the roads there, and since there's so many people that walk and run and everything else. I was thinking that since you're gonna be doing the resurfacing, you know, is there a possibility of throwing in some sidewalks?
Fran, public comment is not designed to engage. We don't do question and answer. But our director is in the other room, I'm gonna have him speak to you, and he's available after you're done.
Okay, so on the other note, I thank God with the way that my parents had raised me. I am not from here. I am from Tampa, and with the way that my brothers and I were raised, we were raised not to judge, that the only, that there's only one God to judge, period. I think that having this Pride event would be a wonderful thing for everyone. And if people choose not to come, don't come. But I have also seen on Facebook where there's a lot of groups that are starting to form with the backlash, and that is why there's people from Pride that are trying to get groups to do a blockade, which I think is fine. But as far as the reading to the children, well, you have to keep in mind that you have teachers that are of this race, if you want to call it, that are also gay, that also read to the kids, and they have normal lives with normal kids. You have trans, you have homosexuals, and, I mean, kids that are just trying to live their lives each and every day. And I think that they should be treated as an equal in the schools and also within this town. And I'm just really concerned with the overall perspective that there's this negative feedback about what this event is going to affect these kids when, if you are so worried about your kids, then don't bring the kids, period, you know?
Thank you, Fran. And the director's in the overflow room, if you wanted to head over there, he can answer the questions for you about how that might work. Ryan, you're up, and Martha, you're on deck.
Ryan McCaffrey, District 6. I'm a taxpayer and more importantly, a voter. I'm a father of six, soon to be seven children. My wife and I have lived in Stevens Point for almost 20 years, excuse me, and we are proud to be a part of this community. However, when it targets our children, that is kiddie drag show, it's evil. There's no other word for it. You know it is evil. And now, Mr. Mayor, you have my attention. It's been going on for two years, three years, I don't care, but the parents are listening now. Thank you very much. Long live Christ the King.
Thank you. Martha, you're up. And then we have Ryan on deck.
It'd be nice if we could have this discussion without applause.
Irrelevant, but thank you. Martha?
Hi, my name is Martha. I am here to welcome all of you to Stevens Point Pride, held on June 10th. The reason I am welcoming all of you is because it is meant for everyone. It is meant for every child, every human being who has ever been told they are not normal, for every human being who has been looked at and told that unless they fit in within a box that has been conditioned, that they are not worthy human beings. This is a Pride event for all people who are proud of who they are. They are proud of how they are raising their children with tolerance. They are proud for how they are raising with love. They are proud to come and join a bounce house. They are proud to... They are proud to be whoever they are. It is so essential that we start supporting people as they are born. If you are born with skin color that is darker than anyone in this room, you belong in our community. If you are born to a family that is not praying to Jesus, you belong in our community. If you are born as someone who is a part of the LGBTQA queer community, you belong in our community. It's as simple as that. For those of you that have not been able to celebrate with us in the past, it is fantastic event. It is wonderful. Every single person there is there for the right reasons. And the right reasons are making sure we are all celebrated for who we are, not how we fit within someone else's complex understanding of what it means to be a good human, but how we are able to be celebrated from the time that we are two years old and walking for the people that we are and the authentic selves that we are. I welcome all of you to come. I guarantee, even if you try not to have a good time, you will. We have a wonderful participation. We have thousands and thousands of our community members who are all there for all of the right reasons. I could challenge any one of you to say, how many church events have you been to with bounce houses? Because, well, we know how children are oftentimes treated in church communities, don't we? But I would challenge any one of you, I would challenge any one of you to consider why you are not here protesting any of those. And the reason why is because it is not a monolith. People as a part of any community are not a monolith. And people who are a part of the queer community deserve to celebrate just as much as anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ryan, you signed up online. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, that's okay.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
All right. Hi, my name is Ryan Guskovich. I'm actually the event director of Point Pride. So first off, I'd just like to acknowledge some things. I've been sitting online, listening to a lot of the things that are being spoken on there, and I'd just like to put my face out there. First thing that I'd like to say is I am a drag queen. That's what I do and actually host a lot of shows kind of in the Stevens Point area where I'm sure a lot of you or people that you know come to my shows and have a great time. One thing that I'd like to bring up, the same as movies, is obviously not all movies are meant for kids, right? So some people that were speaking there said that they saw one video, great research, by the way, said that they saw one video of drag performance that they didn't think matched to their ideology. Other people are focusing on the idea that drag is a fetish. I find no sexual desire of doing drag, the same way that I'm sure Robin Williams had a great time performing in drag in the movie Miss Doubtfire. But to reference all those things, apparently, me just existing is evil, according to a lot of the people there, which I very much disagree with, as well as when we're thinking about this idea, right, of drag and introducing this very hypersexual idea. I'm not sure if any of you have ever been to a drag show, but when I'm in drag, I literally wear 10 layers of tights. There is no aspect of me that feels sexual at all. I'm sweaty as heck, but I just love performing. And I think drag is any sort of, the same type of performance as anything else. Same thing with people saying that there shouldn't be, any form of sexuality should not be available to children. How many of you have showed your families the movie Beauty and the Beast? It is literally a cartoon where someone falls in love with an animal, but yet we still are able to separate ourselves that because we're actually smart human beings. So a couple more things onto that. I think it is important to have events like this for people. If I had an event like this when I was younger, I would have a much less, I would have had a less hard time figuring out who I am as a person. Growing up, anytime I made a friend that was a girl, I was always asked by any adult around saying, oh, is that your girlfriend? And we think that those kind of conversations are good and not grooming, when in all reality we're doing the exact same thing. It's just people are upset because we're gay. So a lot of people are saying, oh, they don't have an issue, they aren't homophobic, when in all reality they partake in these same actions for straight situations. Referencing the picture of somebody kissing a drag queen on stage, that actually is one of our hosts who, her niece, her niece, who she, who many of you have nieces and nephews who you kiss on the cheek, they did that. So that is not perverted in any way, unless you guys think showing love to a family member is perverted. So I just want everybody to know that our event, like the other people that were there and to support, if you don't want to come, don't. If you think that our event isn't for your family, this event doesn't have to be for you. Like Martha said, the people that are coming to this event is, everybody who is there is there for the right reason. People that are there, including sponsorships from schools, sponsorships from health professionals, sponsorships from insurances, places that genuinely care about people are sponsoring our event, as well as all of the downtown bars as well. So if any of you guys ever go to theirs, I guess if you hate our event, you can't go to any of those bars either because they're sponsoring us. So like Martha said, I encourage anybody that wants to come to our event to actually do the research as opposed to just finding something that's on YouTube or online. Come see how fabulous our event is and see how much people are loved and the energy that comes from this event as opposed to this false idea that we're just really trying to mess up your kids, which is not the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That exhausts our speaker list. I just feel compelled to say one thing, that I really think there's a fair amount of misconception out there about what this event actually is, and I would encourage you.
May I?
That's fine.
May I speak to this?
Absolutely, Mr. Shore.
This hits close to home for me as a parent. For reasons so will become clear in a moment. First, I want to take just a quick second to speak about decorum, because until a moment ago, I was going to congratulate you all for being actually more civil and respectful than a lot of what this council heard around another much more controversial issue called Business 51. The discussion went south moments ago. This council is here to hear views, to hear every views. And that's why what's supposed to happen is to speak to us, because we are making important People are supposed to speak to us, not play to the crowd. This isn't a sporting contest. That's why I have the problem with the applause. I have for a long time. It just, you know, we saw it turned on a dime. So I, like others, received a lot of, well, specifically, I received 15 emails about this. And 12 against and three in support. But before we read any, too much into that, I want to say, similar to, you know, the comments we heard here tonight, one from Rapids, a couple from Plover, I think four or five that I couldn't tell where they were, and at least five from Stevens Point, none from District 2, which I represent. So sure, if you send a message 11 times, that's, I don't know, whatever that is, 12 times 11.
Alderperson, if you could please wrap it up, because we're taking some liberties here, because no Alderperson signed up to speak.
Next time I'll do it before. I was unclear about before or after. So I did reply to one of those emails. I said that more than once we have seen vocal community members claim to speak for the majority. And similar to the point that has been made, the current controversy concerns an event people are free to attend or not attend as they wish. So for all the rhetoric these days about the rights of parents, the only kids at the event will be there because their family wants them to be there. So now to the personal. I myself am the parent of a now adult, non-binary daughter. They, my wife and I, know about the importance of inclusion and LGBTQ plus allyship. This is my kid. Nobody recruited my kid to be non-binary. Yes, they wondered about being a boy or a girl, not from anything we said. It became clear over time, actually not until adulthood, but the question was there, the concern was there, the wondering was there. They're Spash Class of 2014, and I'm proud of them. Unfortunately, they don't live here. They live in Tucson, Arizona, gainfully employed on the University of Arizona campus, where they work in the counseling office in support often of LGBTQ students. Not recruiting, helping them stay in school. Because, talk about the difficulty of young people. It ain't easy. It ain't easy for trans kids, for trans young adults. And so I am a parent. I'm a parent of a trans, now adult kid.
Thank you, Alderperson. All right. And again, with that, our speaker list is exhausted. We now move into item number five. We had Lindsay give us her speech, so we appreciate that. And we'll have Chris Claysmith come up now, and he is the Neighborhood Planner, Economic Development Specialist for the city. And we are going to have the results of the Housing Task Force. And I am going to share this out. Chris, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight. Happy to bring forward the Housing Task Force report. I'm only here to present two quick things. One, I want to provide some context to you all and to those who are here in the meeting rooms tonight about the Housing Task Force report. The report was completed back in March and was sent out and published, publicized, so it has been available since March 15th. So one, I'm going to provide some context for you all, some data and a story about how this data came to be. And then two, pointing you in a direction or priming you for some of the actions that your community organizations and your city staff will be bringing forward to committees and to council to ask for your support in coordinating action to address our housing needs in the city. So if I could get it forward to the next slide, please. So the task force was formed in the fall of 2021, and it was chartered with one clear ask to form a recommendation report to bring forward to planning commission and to the city council. That task force was comprised of professionals and housing support organizations, from city staff, community organizations, landlords, building professionals, to get a comprehensive view of housing within the city of Stevens Point. That report was, again, finalized in March 2023. And as we brought that group together, staff was under the directive to accumulate as much information and from as many perspectives as possible, because we have a duty to portray information for, on behalf of the entire community, and not those who have the ability to make it to every single meeting, but to be very thoughtful about all of the needs of our community. Within that space, staff would research implementation options based on the information that was provided during those presentations, would research implementation goals and strategies from other communities, research best practices, and bring those back to that group for discussion. And in that, in those discussions, the task force would refine the recommendations which are found within your report. City staff were very cognizant about making sure that all folks on that task force were able to speak the needs of their representative groups. That's, that report and all of the presentations that were provided to the task force are all available online. So if you would like to go back and review any of the content that was provided to city staff and to the task force, you can do so. Staff are still implementing recommendations from a 2017 housing study, which also was brought forward into this task force report. Next slide, please.
It seems like the livestream went down, but the Zoom is still working, so we're good.
So to provide some background context too on data for the community, a lot has changed since 2011, and we provided as much up-to-date information as we could, given data from the U.S. Census Bureau. Between 2011 and 2021, the city of Stevens Point reportedly lost 278 housing units. Housing vacancy increased to 5.85%. Most of that was within our rental market, not within our homeownership market. The median monthly cost of homeownership increased to about $1,200. That was from about $1,100. Median monthly rental costs climbed to about $804 from about $670. Our median monthly income, and I want to emphasize this point, of our married couple family, average married couple family in the city of Stevens Point, rose to about $96,800 from $66,800. And our median non-family household monthly income rose to about $33,300 from about $22,100. There will be some terms in here, and I apologize, we might need to do some follow-up conversation. If you have some questions, please approach me and the other planning staff on. But a non-family household is defined as a single-headed household or a group of residents who are living together, who have no affiliation, no relation to one another. So that could range from a living situation of four people, one person. The Census Bureau does a pretty fine way of defining that as just a non-married, non-related living situation. I also want to reiterate that we are still implementing recommendations from our 2017 housing study that do also appear within this Housing Task Force. And just to provide a reminder for some of those recommendations, those included new single-family housing units, an increased quality of student rentals, an increased number of non-student rentals in the community, focus on increasing our number of town homes and zero-outline homes in areas that are appropriate, new senior and assisted living facilities, new multifamily facilities, and use of TIF funds to achieve those, change our family definition to three or more, and several other direct programs from the city of Stevens Point. We're happy to report that since 2021, a lot of things have been achieved on that. This does not include implementations of things like the Berkshire Apartments, the transition of the Edgewater Manor, the Banter Apartments, the Grove Project, which is underway, and several other projects that are happening throughout the community to achieve more single-family residences, as well as some of the multifamily projects which have been underway. Next slide, please. So the report, as you go through it, is broken down into four main objectives and an implementation section. This was originally started out as three main objectives for the task force. That fourth goal, tracking implementation and success of the program, added in to make sure that we are keeping honest with ourselves on what we can accomplish and where we might need additional support to achieve completion of these goals and objectives. So our first goal, decreasing housing insecurity. I would like to take a second to quick define housing insecurity with you all. Housing insecurity is a real, persistent, and growing problem with implications for people's education, health, and well-being. Housing insecurity can take a number of forms, such as homelessness, housing cost burden, which is 30% more of your income going towards your housing costs, residential instability, evictions or other forced moves, doubling up, overcrowding, living in poor-quality housing, or living in neighborhoods that are unsafe and lack access to transportation, jobs, quality schools, and other critical amenities. For the purposes of this report and limited staff capacity, we only defined housing insecurity as our cost burden statistics, so those who are paying more than 30% of their income on their housing situations and our eviction count. We have seen a large increase in our housing cost burden in the area, and it's not just renters who are being afflicted by housing cost burden. You'll see in the report that there- You'll see in the report that there is a significant amount of people who own their homes outright who are housing cost burdened. So there are people who are likely retired, who own their homes, but can't afford to pay on their taxes and are in a situation where they are threatened in their housing security. Goal number two gives us a little more context. We want to diversify and expand the city's housing stock for all residents. That includes a lot of that single-family housing, our type of housing stock that exists here. And goal number three, increasing homeownership through social equity. I want to remind you all, I take this out of lens that there are folks that are more in need of support than others into taking steps towards homeownership if they are desiring homeownership as an option. And so we need to design programs, and some of those programs come forward to you. Some of them may be benefiting different groups of people a little bit differently. We will see that our housing homeownership rates have increased from 2011 to 2021, but have taken a dip since 2021, so we're still hovering at about 50%, which, as a small college town, that's actually quite well. We're doing quite well compared to a lot of our peer communities. Goal four, again, tracking our implementation and success of program, and then we have a small implementation section attached to it. So as you go through this report, you'll see these goals, and we'll break that down a little bit further. So next slide, please. Within each goal, we tried to break these, break down opportunities into three categories, how we can leverage our community networks in order to share information and to link together organizations and resources so we can make more impactful programs, so our community engagement piece. Our zoning opportunities, how we can design our built environment and our community to support our housing stock development, and how we can use that to basically change how many people are living within an area. And then our economic development tools, which are our programs and tools that the city might have, that we could create, given our authority, or have an impact to the housing market directly. Last slide, please. So I didn't go into detail on any of the recommendations. I do want to implore you to take a look, read through, and understand that report and ask questions of city staff. I've not received too many directly regarding the Housing Task Force report, but would be happy to discuss that report with you. There are, as one of the main authors of some of the language, if any of the language is confusing, I'd be happy to explain the craziness that happens within city staff heads. You will see a number of requests coming forward from city staff and from partner organizations that do require public resources, that do require assistance within the operations of those programs in order to succeed. For example, there are community organizations who are working towards establishing a community land trust, which is a great tool for establishing long-term affordability of housing within a community. I highly recommend that you take a look at what those resources are and talk to city staff about what a community land trust might be. We actually have an informational webinar coming up on May 18th that, within the network of community land trusts, is educational material for you all to leverage and understand that tool. So there'll be other community organizations who come forward with requests to execute some of the actions that are listed in here. You'll see in that implementation schedule that there are a lot of tasks that are the responsibility of the city, and that is rather vague. There are a lot of city staff who have ownership over certain parts of those programs, and there's, there are other tools that we require support and directive from the council and the mayor in order to execute. So I look forward to having some earnest conversation with you all over the next few weeks about how we might be able to execute some of those implementation plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, sorry, no clapping, Rich. We have Jane Johnson, Greg Hansel, and Bobby Joy, who signed up to speak on that. As I said, we typically don't allow interaction, question and answers during presentations, but Greg, you were on the Housing Task Force too, right?
No.
You weren't? Okay. If Bobby Joy or Jane Johnson want to speak, I'll allow it this time, only because you were both on the Housing Task Force, and this is the presentation. Greg, I assume you're going to talk about item number 10, which is the, and if you want to wait Jane and Bobby Joy to speak on item 10, if that's really what your goal is, we can do that. But if you have something to add to the Housing Task Force results, white paper, I would allow you to do that now, simply only because you were both serving on the Housing Task Force. If it's really just about item 10, which is the family definition, then we can wait till then.
I'll wait till 10.
Bobby Joy? It's nice for people to know and understand the process from the task force members, because this is the presentation of the result of over a year's worth of work. I think it's important that a member, if they want to add something, would be allowed to do so. By the way, the entire report is available at StevensPoint.com, or if you want a hard copy, you can contact Chris or myself, and we'll get one for you. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Bobby Joy. I'm in, I work for CAP Services, and I was a member of the Housing Advisory Task Force. And I just want to echo what Chris said as far as moving forward. I think probably the most important item on there is that implementation for any of these ideas, and none of them solve all the problems at once, but it does require leadership from the city, and so please read the report, ask questions of city council members, and contact Chris in his office. But this is really important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you also for joining me. Last Friday, Bobby Joy and I went and toured Mary's place in Marshfield. It's a transitional shelter, and they're opening up a new one in Wisconsin Rapids. We're very much looking forward to that one as well. And...
Do you have a mic? Can we call it in?
Absolutely.
Because I think I'm just supporting one. So in that, I'm Jane Johnson, and I was part of the Housing Task Force. So in that document, as you read it, all that good work, I know that it's kind of number 10 in the sense that you guys are going to talk about family, the definition of family, but also talking about what that means. I just want to reiterate that I think it's really dangerous for us to have any sense of having documentation about who and what family is. I don't think it's your role to decide that, allowing, because I think it's dismissive about current realities of folks who choose family and living relationships outside of conventional marriage. So I just want to reiterate that. And we have regulation based on square footage, and I know that I've heard the question, how do we enforce that? I guess the same way we would regulate if folks are related. And I think it might be easier to find out a square footage of a place rather than find out whether people are blood relatives. So that's just my thought on that. Allowing three or four unrelated folks to live together is one tool, one tool that you can move forward to help our housing crisis. It would also benefit young adults, that we want our young adults to stay in Stevens Point, but they need to be able to have, pay rent so that they can save money, so they can become a homeowner, which is what we are striving for, more homeownership. So it's a great tool towards that. It's also another way to increase the number of unrelated folks to be able to live together who are seniors or to stay in their housing when their income gets limited. Wouldn't it be wonderful to have a Golden Girls house in every city block? But with our current regulations, Blanche and Dorothy have to go somewhere else. So this is a tool for a growing, flourishing, 21st and 22nd century Stevens Point. We need to move forward, and we need to build on this with the wonderful plans we have going for us. And I just want to thank you for supporting Pride Day, Point Pride Day in Stevens Point, starting with the family pride time at 11:00 a.m. to the ban shell extravaganza in the evening. I'm excited to be a part of June 10th. Love wins.
Thank you very much. All right. That concludes the presentation, and now we'll move on to item number six, which is an update on usage of potential shared revenue increase. I put this one on specifically to give the council a further update. You had your update from Comptroller Treasurer Lattick. As the budget process moves along, we have a high confidence level that we're going to get an increase in shared revenue. And this is important, and I want people watching and listening to know the importance of this. Right now, we have the ability as a community, well, let's go back a little bit further. The state has imposed levy limits, limiting the amount of money that the city can spend each year equal to that of what's called net new construction. So if we spend, or if we have a budget, and this year, we have a net new construction of 1%, so some buildings go up every year, some buildings get torn down every year. Applebee's is a good example, but Applebee's will be turned into a University of Wisconsin Credit Union, so next year, we'll have some value there. So you lose value, you increase value. The state says you can only increase your budget, your spending, by the amount of net new construction. So if we only grow 1%, and let's say the cost of living goes up 5%, and we can only spend, increase our spending 1%, you see where I'm going with this, right? We have been tightening the belts for more than a dozen years, to the point where last year, the cost of living went up seven or eight percent. Even Social Security got a bump of about 8%. And what could we do for our employees? Well, we had a really good year last year with growth, 2.52%. So we stuck every dime of it into the pay plan, because we knew that the cost of goods and services for our employees went up 8%. All we could do by law was 2.52%. Then we actually made budget cuts in each of the departments to round it up to three. Imagine our pride. 3% we can give you, but everything goes up 8. So the ways around this, or to work within the rules, let's say, the city could create a transportation utility, meaning a certain amount of our transportation expenses, roads and things like that, could be levied outside of those limits. What that really means is, we can charge you more in taxes and fees, so we can meet that threshold, but that's only good for certain transportation items. The county has the ability to take all of their emergency services, and those are outside the levy limits. So the county can increase spending as they need to on any emergency services. City can't. We are not afforded that same luxury. And every year, the state gives us what's called shared revenue. You pay, the only income we have from our citizens is property taxes, but you pay state income tax. The state takes that money, all of it, and gives the municipalities back some of it. That's called shared revenue. Every year, we've seen a decline in the amount of money that our citizens pay that the state returns to us. We never got 100%, don't get me wrong there, but every year, it's been declining. So not only are we stuck with levy limits on how much we can spend, but the amount that the state contributes to our budget has been going down and down. I'm not in favor of a transportation utility, because that just means you and I have to pay more taxes. What I'd like to do is see the state give us back some of the money that we already give them. And we're very fortunate, this year, it seems to be happening. Our legislature right now is working through an increase in shared revenue. There's a couple of options that may happen before they actually vote on it in June or July, but right now, they're looking at giving back one penny of the five-cent sales tax that you pay on everything you buy, or almost everything you buy. So 20% of the sales tax would go back to the communities in shared revenue. It ballparks Stevens Point at about $600,000. If that process runs through and eventually gets voted on, approved, and signed into law by the governor, we can expect about $600,000 additional for this year's budget, I'm sorry, next year's budget, 2024. So we're trying to be proactive. We already know that we're down 5% on employee wages from last year, and we're looking at what can we do should this actually happen? If it's less, we'll have to adjust, and if it's more, great, but we'll still have to adjust. There is a possibility of a few other things. One of them might be moving emergency services outside the levy limit, but again, that just means you and I pay more. I'd rather get some of the money we already paid back, and it looks really good. So staff has been meeting, and we're talking, we know that we're having a hard time recruiting employees across the board. It's not just one or two positions, it's across the board. Other municipalities have better circumstances, they can afford to pay their employees a little bit better. We have even gotten together and adjusted other compensation that's not paid, adjusting the amount of vacation, how quickly you earn it, adjusting flexibility and work schedules, funeral and bereavement leave, and defining the definition of family, no offense, Mother Jane, to include more relatives in your bereavement leave, trying to make up for the fact that we can't quite pay everybody what they should be getting paid based on the industry standards. So in anticipation of some additional shared revenue coming in for the 2024 budget, staff has met, and what we would like to do is do a pay study, right? A full-blown 84, hang on, I got the number here, somewhere. It's 84 positions and 140 some, here we go, 86 titles and 145 employees. Now, we have more employees than that, but many of those are represented by unions in the police department, fire department, transit. We are working with Baker Tilly to do that, and we've got an estimate of about $41,100 to do the full-blown pay scale. They reevaluate every position, and they will give us a recommended pay plan. It may not look the same as we have right now, and for those, actually, there's nobody left here.
I was here.
Before Act 10 was shot down, or before Act 10, we had a different pay system as well. So we went to the grades and steps after that. So we don't know what it's going to look like yet, and we're not going to vote on it tonight, because it is not an action item. We just wanted you to be aware of it, and we want the ability for you to ask questions of staff, not here tonight, but over the course of the next couple of weeks. And then our intention is to have a special council meeting on May 30th, and the clerk is going to be calling all of you to see what your availability is about 5 o'clock, to consider that authorization. What we would be asking for at the time is that $41,100, or at least that's about the amount we're looking at, to conduct that pay study. And then we have a timeline where we will have data and a new pay plan for you to consider prior to the approval of the 2024 operational budget. Yes, ma'am?
Ma'am, I appreciate this information, but I was just wondering, like, why this, what you're saying is under this item number six, that it's for a shared revenue increase, but is that, it's just interesting to me, it's not an actual, like, agenda item that we're discussing.
Well, because we don't know yet. So, and that's why we put it out there. And the council chooses what to do should there be a shared revenue increase. We're not even sure that's going to happen yet, but we have a high confidence level that there will be an increase in shared revenue when the budget is passed. If we wait till the budget is passed to make, to see that that's approved, we'll be behind the eight ball, and we won't be able to get a study done in time to approve the 2024 budget. So I'm introducing it, we as staff are introducing, I'm speaking for staff, we're introducing it now, asking for your consideration that should that, well, first of all, we probably need to do the pay plan study anyway, and then figure out how to pay for it if the shared revenue doesn't happen, but it's the step in the right direction, and we won't be behind the eight ball, stuck late in the game if we wait till the budget is approved before doing this. Right? So obviously, we wouldn't be able to implement the pay plan if it was another $500,000, if we don't have another $500,000. But we're trying to be proactive to make sure that our employees are going to get compensated appropriately in the 2024 budget. So it's an informational item tonight. Post your questions to department heads or myself over the next couple of weeks, and then May 30th, we're going to have a special meeting. And the reason we chose that is because there, so Baker Tilly is going to start gathering the data now, and if we approve it, they have a timeline that starts in June, to make sure that they get all the market studies and the comparables, and then they need several months to get their pay plan and everything in order. We should have data, she said August or September, which is in time for the budget approval. And if there's some tweaks or changes, maybe we only get $300,000 in increased shared revenue, or maybe we get a million, we'll be able to, still have time to adjust that should it happen. But again, we believe that there's a high confidence, we have a high confidence level that something's going to pass, and we're going to get an increase in shared revenue. We just really don't know how much yet.
Okay.
Make sense?
Understood.
So that's all there is. I didn't intend to take any questions tonight, but if you need to, contact my office or contact any of the department heads, and check your availability for the May 30th meeting. All righty? Thank you. All right. Item number seven. All right, item number seven is the consent agenda. I do need to make some changes. We need to pull item number five under the water and sewage commissioners meeting, and item number four under the airport commission meeting for separate consideration. Are there any objections to that?
Can you repeat that?
No.
Okay. So, then I need a motion to, or unless...
What was pulled?
Item number five of the water and sewage commissioners, utility position evaluations, and airport position evaluations. And you may get a hint as to why, right? Position evaluations. So, is there anything anybody else wants to discuss separately? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda with those two items pulled.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
In looking at the monthly expenses, it looks like that a pay study plan was paid for already? Broken down in three different, the water, the airport, and the sewer department?
Yes.
Of $13,000.
Yes.
Who authorized that?
I would assume it's the Board of Water and Sewerage Commissioners, right?
I thought we were supposed to authorize what you just said, pay plans.
Pay plans, yes.
Pay study plans, I mean.
It's a gray area, because the utility department is an enterprise fund, and they answer to the Public Service Commission of the state, not us. Much like the Police and Fire Commission doesn't answer to us, they are, optional powers is what it's called, but they're separate. They don't need our permission to do it. We control the purse strings once a year. So if we give the Police and Fire Commission $100,000, the Police and Fire Commission gets to do with that what they need to.
Okay.
The same is with enterprise funds.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we get a motion?
No.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions outlined.
Thank you.
And I'd second that.
Seconded by President Christensen. Discussion? Hear any none? Could we get a roll call, please?
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Zerosua?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Placence?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Ling?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Now, going back to these, and I'm going to explain each one a little bit more. The Board of Water and Sewerage Commissioners acted on the utility possession, position evaluations, but because of the shared revenue, we've opted, or we're hoping, to postpone implementation of that until the pay study is done, and then do it for everybody. We will not be paying for those positions for that evaluation again, but we will be paying some additional money to grade those positions. Sandy left already. Compensation comparison, that's what it's called. So it's basically an evaluation of the duties. You get scored, you get put into a grade, they compare that to the market for the same duties. So, a bad example, but a mayor in Stevens Point and a mayor in one of our comparables, let's say Manitowoc, are they compensated the same or similar? And generally, what we do is if they're within about 5%, we call it good. If there's a discrepancy one way or the other, then we take action. So we're going to get a market analysis to say what a water operator gets paid in all of our comparable municipalities and any industry data that they have available. And then they'll get into value, they'll place that position, and they'll do that for all 86 positions that we have in the city.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Let's go here and then there, sorry.
Back to the compare and contrast with Police and Fire, if I could. So, yeah.
Not 100% the same, but...
Yeah, I wanted to kind of just get clear on, yeah, on the compare and contrast. So, Police and Fire, the optional powers cut us out of their personnel policies. And, and, you know, with the reference to collective bargaining before, Police and Fire have collective bargaining agreements, so is that true on the utility side?
Not on the utility side, on the transportation side, yes. Transportation employees are still represented.
Right, right, right.
And not everybody in the Police Department and the Fire Department are represented either. So generally, it's upper management, assistant chiefs, that sort of thing, so, yes.
Oh, I was just a comment. I think in the future, it would just be helpful to have something included in our packet, just so the council's not completely caught off guard, because I don't think we have a disagreement about, you know, the importance of this. But I think that there's an issue with the looks of bewilderment on the entire council. I think it's really important, I think the next time if something like this comes up, just to actually include something in our packet.
We could try and do that, but I can tell you that the decision to do this was made about 3 o'clock this afternoon. So, that's why you don't have anything...
Have to hand out then.
Sure, sure. No, no, that's a good idea, and we should have thought of that, but it was a long meeting, and I apologize for not having that. So, what I would ask is that we postpone action on the utility position evaluations, and we will bring it back with the regular pace, pay plan evaluation.
I second that.
I can't make the, I didn't make the motion.
I thought you did.
I would prefer someone else do it.
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
There we go. The motion is to postpone action on the utility position evaluations until we bring it back to the full council with all of the evaluations. We can do this with a voice, right? Or do you want to, you want to roll?
I think, well, we could do a voice, I would think, on that.
Let's do a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Unanimous consent. The Airport Commission took exactly the same action. There's one position there that was evaluated, and that's the airport manager. This one's a little more unique, because we have one of the largest municipal, municipally-owned airports in the entire state, and we are the only one that runs our own FBO. And I don't remember what the acronym stands for, but I'm going to tell you that what they do is they provide services such as fuel and scheduling of mechanics and maintenance and that sort of thing. Up until, boy, Halverson was mayor, we had actually contracted with the company to provide those services, and most other places do. At that time, we stopped contracting and just shifted them all to the airport manager. So when the airport manager's position was evaluated, there are no comparables for an airport manager slash FBO. So, the airport manager's duties didn't have anything to compare it to. It was placed at an airport manager position or a level, so there was no compensation whatsoever for the FBO duties. At the time, we needed to shift the emergency manager duties. They were public works director, I believe, at the time. Why we did that is another story, but let's just say that we chose to have someone who's not going to be immediately involved in an emergency, generally speaking, like the director of public works would be. So, we had the position duties evaluated separately, and it was determined that a $13,000-ish annual stipend was appropriate for the additional EM duties. In an attempt to help make up for the SBO or FBO lack of compensation, we gave the duties of emergency manager to the airport manager, who had some military background and was familiar with ICS and the National Incident Management Training. It made sense. Now we have a deputy fire chief position that is perfect to do the emergency manager duties. So the emergency manager duties are going to shift there, however, we still haven't compensated our airport manager for those additional FBO duties. So, what we would ask, and I know I got it here somewhere, papers are all shuffled around now, is, here it is. The evaluation was $83,720, which is an increase of approximately 10%, but that still didn't take into account the FBO duties.
Mayor?
Yes.
Question. So, are we voting on an increase in pay at the moment? What is happening here?
Yes.
Okay, I have to disagree with that. I mean, this should go through the appropriate, I mean, I guess, is this something that was already voted on previously?
The Airport Commission approved it, yes.
Okay, all right. I just, I guess why isn't it its own agenda item in here and not just pulling it from the consent?
Because we decided on it at 3 o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, and so this is the example I'm using where it would be helpful to know about this before we actually have to vote on something, because now, council's being forced to vote on something we literally know nothing about.
You're not being forced to vote on anything.
Well, I just don't think it's right to bring it up last minute. I do understand there's different circumstances, but I think there should be some way to prep council beforehand instead of blindsiding them. I just don't think that's fair.
And I can't agree with you more. However, the way things move, we don't always have, that's why we're having a special meeting, we had a special plan commission meeting tonight. We're having a special council meeting on the 30th.
Is there any reason it couldn't wait till the 30th?
It probably could, but we're in the process of recruiting already. So because it was approved by the Airport Commission, and it was slightly different, if I would be allowed to finish, what was, what was approved by the Airport Commission was step three, and I apologize, Joel, I don't have that dollar amount in front of me.
$83,720.
Okay. What we're looking at is a modification to that of $83,720 with a $5,000 stipend for the FBO duties. That hasn't been evaluated, but I can tell you the contract that we had with the former FBO company was worth at least $30,000, and the FBO kept all the revenues from the fuel sales and things like that. We get that now as the airport. We get the revenue from the sale, the fuel sales. So, I'll let the director speak to the reason we couldn't wait till next month, but honestly, we've talked about it at staff, and we've all agreed on this. So if there are specific questions, we'll try and answer them tonight. If you don't feel comfortable making the decision, you postpone it, just like you did the last one. You're not being forced to vote on anything.
FBO, what does that mean?
Fixed base of operations. It's basically all the services that are offered at an airport, from fueling to arranging for mechanics, to arranging for other transportation outside the airport, everything that is a service needed by pilot or crew or passengers coming in, it's the kind of stuff. Think of it, it's everything except for the administration of the airport. So, the dealing with the state and federal regulators, dating with their, dealing with the facilities themselves, that's airport manager, airport director job, everything else kind of is FBO. So there's a small nuance here is what we're doing. You're on the consent agenda, the things that went through, I think were acted on appropriately. We decided as a staff that if the city's going to go forward with a larger plan, it makes sense to roll this stuff out. This one hasn't changed a lot in the dollar impact. What went through the commission that's in your minutes is changed slightly to go from S3 with no stipend to S1 with a stipend. The dollar amount is actually negligible there, and it's right back to the same basic pay, right, because of the current situation. So, it's a small nuanced thing. Because of how we do this in policy, it's a little weird, but going back to step one, even though we don't hire at step one type thing. But anyway, that's why it's there. So it's not really a large action, it's a moving around of some pieces.
Okay, thank you for that.
And I really do apologize. I mean, this is an anomaly. Again, it was decided on this afternoon. We probably could have had a memo. I didn't think about that, but...
I guess the thing I'd throw out that you mentioned that I totally ignored is the fact that there's a lot of recognition that we have a really good opportunity here to shift duties around in a way that's going to be really productive for the city. JB's already advertising, getting ready to interview for a position that takes on the EM duties. We fully support that. I think I mentioned that at committees, it's a good thing, and I just really don't want to stand in the way of that happening. So that's the urgency behind this one, not any data.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would hope that you trust me saying this, but if not, you know, in God we trust, everybody else pays cash. I would open it up to any directors right now, because we talked about this, well, I guess now close to six hours ago, but if there's any directors that have any concerns or anyone that wants to make a statement, I would allow you to do that now in regards to this item. I don't know if anybody's coming, can you look out the hall and see if anybody's coming from the overflow?
Okay.
All right. But as I said, we talked about it at staff, I apologize for the short notice, but literally staff ended after 4 o'clock. So it was very last minute to make this change. Yes, sir?
So, if the concern is, and I'm understanding it correctly, that this isn't like just a way to increase the salary, then I guess the question is, you described that often this work is done on a contract. So, I suppose the most reassuring thing for us would be to know that this, these responsibilities aren't often handled as regular duties of such a management position.
That's true, and I can tell you that our compensation comparison consultant will tell you exactly that. There are no comparables to what our airport manager slash FBO does, because everybody contracts that out, everybody else contracts those services out. We'll go this way, and then back to Alderperson-Lang.
So if I understand it correctly, basically the dollar amount is, the change is negligible, it's basically just kind of renaming the position instead of being step three, it's step one with a stipend. Does that make sense?
Yes-ish, but I'll remind you too that this is an airport, so it's an enterprise, it's not coming out of the pool of taxes that we approve. Okay.
The easiest way, the wage represents where the comparables are, the S1, and that just doesn't account for the other things. So, what do we do? Adjust the wage, or do we call it what it is and say, this is the stipend for services that are normally contracted out?
Does that make sense? So the wage adjustment is for the airport manager, those other duties are still not accounted for because nobody else does an FBO. So we're offering, we're presenting a stipend rather than changing the whole job, which could potentially throw off someone else's airport manager position, calling it a stipend, which is separate duties.
And I just wanted to throw out there that it's in the large general aviation category we're talking about. It gets weird, but those are the ones we're comparing to, so the wage is accurate within that, which we're in, we're in large general aviation. When you get into the medium and small, it's different, but in our comparison...
Is that another way of saying sentry insurance?
No, no. No, I agree.
No, we're the third largest municipal airport in the state, right?
Right in there, third or fourth.
Yeah. Alderperson-Lang?
Yeah, I was just wondering, what is the, just some clarification, what is the fire chief thing that's going on with this? I heard you had mentioned, like, what is that role?
Sure, so it's a deputy fire chief, or deputy fire marshal, I apologize. I'll let the chief speak to that position.
So what we're, what we did is, we created a, another position within the Fire Bureau at Stevens Point Fire Department. It is a deputy fire marshal who is going to work under our division chief in the bureau, working on code enforcement, fire investigations, and public education. The city has come forward, and we've recognized that we needed to shift the emergency management coordinator's roles to the fire department, and with nobody in that position yet, we thought it was a good time to take those two positions, make them one, put an annual salary to that package, and put that position out to hire. That application process is open until Wednesday of this week, May 17th. Next week, we will be doing interviews and hopefully hiring that person internally or externally in the, in the month of June.
And our decision here would give you the ability to offer something in that?
Correct. So we have, the deputy fire marshal position was graded and went to subcommittees for a step for approval, to start at a certain step, and then the emergency management coordinator's position as a stipend offered to that position. And we felt it was very important to offer that annual salary package with that stipend to start in order to get better qualified candidates to apply for that position here in Stevens Point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Didn't you also experience an increase in the number of inspections that they have to undertake when you took on Park Ridge?
Well, it was more than that, too.
Prior to our division being created in 2018, we roughly did about 1,100 inspections annually. After the position was created, and for the last four years, we've increased our inspections to about 1,500. And last year, we were at almost 1,900-plus inspections. So we've almost doubled our inspections in the last four years. And the reason being is now that that bureau has been created, and to have consistency amongst and have one voice in our community, we've realized that there were places we weren't inspecting prior, that we needed to be inspecting. There were re-inspects and follow-ups, and now we're also working with community development and Ryan's department to be able to be involved at the ground level where we really need to be involved as a fire department, making sure the community is safe. And that's where we're looking at that risk reduction management program.
And a step up in professionalism, too.
We've taken more than one step up in professionalism, just by adding that bureau in that position. And the second one will take us to the next level.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Is that airport manager slash FBO, is that unique for just this person? And when this person resigns or retires, we will change it, then?
I would say what it gives us an opportunity to do is that if we go through staff transition, we can consider whether we not want to hire an FBO operator. I don't think we would, given that we're going to lose fuel sales revenue, and it'll cost us another 30 grand, you know? So then our tax levy dependency would actually go up by that much, you know, which we don't want to do. Airports are very small, tax levy dependent, if you will. It's like to the tune of 160,000, I think, something like that. It's not very much. So we get the rest through land lease, building lease, fuel sales, and stuff like that. So that's part of the benefit of having that FBO be managed under staff of the city, is that we get all the benefit of the fuel sales and everything else.
And we're the only one to do this?
We're not the only, no. No, we're not the only one. It's just of our size, it's very rare. So you get smaller, and they might have a part-timer who comes in and mows, and then they have an FBO operator who sits there and makes coffee and, you know, fills planes up with fuel and helicopters and everything else that comes in, because the need is different. But we have a big airport, so there's a lot of administrative need, and there's a lot of FBO need, and we do them through our staff. Yep.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
The 84,000, I'm going to go fuzzy on that. So that would, where would that money come from?
Where it comes from originally, I mean now, currently, airport revenues.
Airport revenues. Do we have 84,000 plus extra in airport revenues on a yearly basis?
It's not extra.
Well, where would it come from if it's not?
Because we're paying for a large portion of that already. This is a slight increase of $7,779.
For that one position, but all the others combined?
The others combined aren't up for consideration. This is one, the only one position.
And the end result from today to this is very, very small, because it's a larger stipend that's going away, and a smaller stipend than it's coming on, for a smaller current wage to a bigger wage, right? So the dollars are very, very small.
So this person had one responsibility taken away from him, and he gets an increase in pay?
No, we're recognizing the responsibility that had never been compensated for. That is a large component of his job, in lieu of one that was not as big a component of his job that's not moving away.
There should be some explaining done out there, because not this past weekend, but the weekend before, I had seven people that I talked to, and five of them expressed that concern with me, that specific item. So you may understand it.
Employees?
Yes, employees.
Sure. No, and that makes sense, because I had a few contact me as well. But the FBO duties are the big thing.
And that's the only item that we're talking about?
Only the airport manager.
None of the other items that they proposed?
Correct.
Okay.
Excuse me. Actually, you postponed all of those other items in the last action.
We didn't. They were postponed before us. Oh, okay. Yes, yes, okay.
Yep, the last action that I had pulled. Rather than approving them, we postponed them until everything is done. We're only talking about the airport manager.
Well, we postponed the personnel stuff last week.
No.
In the meeting.
It was pulled.
Yeah, it was pulled, right. You're right. But it was actually postponed, acted on just prior to this one.
So then the last question I have is that if we meet on this at the end of the month, and the potential shared revenue increase doesn't happen, where would we be getting money? We got two weeks to think about that for our next meeting.
So there's some confusion there, too, apparently. All you'd be authorizing, all I'm going to, we're going to ask you to authorize on May 30 is the $41,100 roughly, a firm number, for the evaluation of every position.
Oh, okay.
With the exception of this one, because we don't have a comparable. We already know that.
Thanks. That went on. Thanks.
Yep, okay, good. And then, yeah, if and when the extra money comes through, we'll decide how we are able to utilize that within the pay plan. Any other questions? I want to make sure everybody fully understands if you choose to act, and I hope you do. Okay, then I'd be looking for a motion to approve the, what do we call it, position evaluation for the airport manager to include grade S step one at 83,720 with a $5,000 stipend for FBO duties.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. And discussion there. Allison, I'm sorry. Alder Person Burr. It's going to take a little bit. Any discussion?
I'll just say...
Okay, wait. Yeah, we'll go this way.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say very quickly, in the interest of consistency, I was leaning towards just postponing this as well, but I appreciate the clarification from the fire chief that this is helpful for his recruitment and all of that. So in lieu of that, or with that in mind, then I'm happy to move forward.
Anybody else on this side? Sorry, now I'm going to move to this side.
I have a question.
Alder Person Morrow?
Didn't we have a pay-study plan prior to this, back in, like, 2000?
Fifteen, I believe, sixteen, maybe?
Twenty-one?
Oh, yeah, we had one back then, too. We do paid studies every so often. We do market surveys between pay studies, if that makes sense. So since I've been on council, this is, this will be the fourth pay study that we've done. And I couldn't even tell you how many market surveys we had. Market surveys are generally done between those pay studies to make sure that you're keeping your positions with the market. A 5% or 3% or whatever increase across the board doesn't necessarily flow with the market, because we may have an abundance of IT professionals and very few people who can drive a forklift. And five years from now, forklift drivers might be in high demand, and IT professionals are a dime a dozen. So the market survey fluctuates with the market. The pay study is an evaluation of all of the positions based on the duties at that snapshot in time. We try and keep up, but we never do. Makes sense?
Time flies.
Right? Any other comments? Okay, we're going to do this as a voice vote as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous consent, that's approved. And now, we're going to move to item number fifteen. Glad we got you pushed up, Kevin, see, there.
Patience is a virtue. He's so virtuous.
Approving the lease of the Boys and Girls Club of Portage County for the space at 933 Michigan Avenue. Alder Shore?
We'll move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Alder Keemer.
Seconded by Keemer. Discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I want to just clarify that the monthly bill that they're paying is only for utilities. There's no rent involved, correct?
The, well...
Or to the, I don't have my...
So the dollar amount that was agreed on by everyone included the utilities. It was designed to be a guesstimate average of utilities.
But that's just utilities?
Yes. That was what the design was. Since it fluctuates every single month, and it was a headache to try and figure that out, we agreed on a set dollar amount for just expenses.
And that will be every month?
That will be every month for the term of the agreement, which is, I think we decided on three years. We landed on three years.
To make sure of that.
And it's $900, right? $900 a month.
I'm going to be a little bit of the devil's advocate. I mean, this is nothing against the Boys and Girls Club, or their programs, or their staff. But this is a really sweet deal that one nonprofit in the city gets. If a nonprofit wants to rent the Iverson Lodge, they pay the full price, just like a private citizen. But this group gets, what, 5,000 square feet rent-free? I know a lot of nonprofits that would love to have access to city buildings like this. And again, this is nothing against the success of the program. We're hurting for money. We just heard all about whether we get shared revenue or not. And we're giving away 5,000 square feet of space for nothing? It just seems a little irresponsible in this day and age not to charge something. But, you know, I'm sure this will pass, but I just want to, you know, I had a couple of nonprofit folks contact me and say, this is just not fair. We don't get anything like this. A lot of money gets donated to the Boys and Girls Club, probably for a good cause. But there are a lot of other nonprofits that struggle, that don't get the kind of exposure or benefits that just one particular one gets. And it just seems to me that if we're going to be giving some consideration to one nonprofit, what are we going to do for the other nonprofits? When they come up and say, hey, we want to have some space here, they get it free, we'll pay utilities, why can't we have it? Just saying. It sets a precedent. I mean, we're already giving them space for a dollar a year and paying for maintenance on the building. I mean, it's a sweet deal, but they're the only one in the city that gets it. So that's the problem I have with it. And that's it, so.
Thank you. We'll go to Alder Person Shore, and then Alder Person Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor. Valid concerns. I've thought about this myself. And to be fair honest, I can't get away from kind of the technical term from, you know, my training. There's like a path dependence here, because they're on the premises is probably a factor. What tipped me over to support was this connection between the space and the specific program, and the clear fact that that program is, in many other communities, is carried out as a government function rather than a nonprofit function. And so, yeah, that they're doing, they are implementing those services in lieu of what would often be either a county or more often a school board, which led me to the kind of cheap, you know, quip that I made that last time, that, you know, I hope we get a nice thank you note from the school board for this subsidy, when it, you know, maybe fits them a little better.
Thank you. Alder Fisher.
I agree with Alder Shore's comments, but I also, I think the difference here, too, is that we're in a childcare crisis at the moment. And the Boys and Girls Club fills a huge need in our community for childcare, like, hands down. They hardly charge anything for your kid to go there, and they take care of, you know, kindergartners all through high schoolers. So honestly, I just feel like if it was a nonprofit that we were going to help out, it definitely needs to be the Boys and Girls Club.
Any other comments? Yes, Alder Zerozua?
I want to say I understand what Alder Nibon is saying, but also understanding that the function of government isn't about profits. And yes, we have to be good stewards of tax dollars, but this is a space that is currently empty. Their campus is here. We are mixed together. And I think that when asking, what will we do if others come forward asking for money or free space, we're going to discuss it and make a decision. It doesn't mean that this is a one-time thing. We've had these kind of discussions about create Portage County when they asked for money, you know, is that fair to other businesses? We're always going to have those discussions, you know, supporting the downtown business association versus other business groups around town. Like, we're always going to talk about if things are fair or not, but it just makes sense with the programs that they're talking about with Gateway and the other, the types of programs being connected physically with our building in a space that's already empty. And they're paying utilities, so they're not costing us money unless we magically would be able to rent that out. So that's it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
In a slight way, we are collecting rent, because right now, as of today, we are paying roughly the $900 in utilities. The city is on a regular basis every month, because no one is in there. And at least putting someone in there now, we will be getting $900 a month for that property.
Any other comments? Two points of clarification. We're not quite paying that much because unoccupied. We keep the heat really low, and no one's using water. But you're right, there is a cost for us to sit it, letting it sit vacant. That's true. So that's a good point. The other thing that I want to point out is, if there was any confusion, we did not market this to anybody else. We didn't say, hey, we've got 5,500 square feet. Do any nonprofits want to use it? We didn't do that. We have had people come and ask us to rent the space, and the original agreement that we had, that I thought we had an agreement on, was the same, it was still a pretty sweet deal, that we had given Northwest Journey. So it was less than the appropriate amount by several dollars per square foot. But I just want to be clear that we didn't, like, market it to any other nonprofits, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, or any other organizations. So I just wanted to be clear on that. All right. We do have a motion, right? Motion is seconded. Any other discussion?
Utility raises, I mean, if it goes nuts, or...
Three years is probably not going to go crazy.
Okay, there's a little bump there.
But the contract is the contract. It's $900 for three months, or three years, $900 per month for three years. There is no stipulation in there if natural gas suddenly goes through the roof, or, I don't know, cost of electricity goes down.
Wouldn't that be nice?
All right. In this case, we will need a roll call. So if you're in favor, vote
yes. Opposed, vote no.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zerozua?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plissant?
Aye.
Nibon?
No.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that's approved. Thank you both for your patience. All right. Item number eight now. We're going to go back to the regular agenda. Item number eight is a resolution, a request from Associated Bank for assigned variance to install two freestanding signs on the property located at 1305 Main Street, consistent with chapter 25.14.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Plissant?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Zerozua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoke to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Patch Street, consistent with chapter 23.01 sub-14 sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right, seconded by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. No, clerk, opposed, no. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zerozua?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plissant?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Morrow?
Wolf.
We'll take that as a yes. So real short, just to clear it up for everybody, yes, it was considered a structure. If you get one of these roll-off sheds, if it's permanent, it's up there more than six months, it's a structure. And go get a permit. If you put it on wheels, though, it doesn't seem to matter.
Yeah, anytime the public has access to something like that, we want to make sure
Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. No, clerk, opposed, no. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shor.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shor.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. No, clerk, opposed, no. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shor.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shor.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. No, clerk, opposed, no. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shor.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shor.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. No, clerk, opposed, no. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shor.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shor.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Except for personal experience.
All right. Any discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And that's approved. Item number nine is a resolution, a request from John Kenoki to our conditional use permit to construct a second principal structure on a property located at 2001 Pat Street, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub-14 Sub-F.
I will motion.
Motion by Shuda.
Second.
All right. Second by Plissant. Discussion. Comments from the audience?
So we really consider that dog washing facility a structure?
Don't get me started.
Okay. I'm sorry. I found it out.
Hey, it's nice.
The short answer is yes, and we're going to leave it at that.
Give it back to you. So I'm only going to read certain sections of what have passed down the line for you. And it's highlighted on here that on page 69, it says, "It's not the city's responsibility to the city government to provide housing for city residents." That was from the committee that you paid $40,000 to. "The purpose of the study is to identify gaps between supply and demand." Same thing today. Who can afford and who cannot and what is available. "Offer strategies and so that more people will choose to live here in Stevens Point." That is the goal people have. We want people to live here in Stevens Point and live here happily. On page 69, it has a little comment there, but I'm going to skip over that and say, down to page 75, 76, it says, "Right now, the city of only two unrelated occupants in most housing units. Regulating the number of unrelated people that can live together in the same housing unit prevents the concentration of non-related adults in units intended for families." Skipping to the next highlighted area, "We are concerned that a change to this ordinance could work against efforts to manage and reverse the conversion of single-family homes to rental units. We recommend that this approach, similar to the city of Platteville, wherein the family definition of two unrelated occupants is retained only in a specific geographic area around the university, perhaps about one and a half mile to the ground campus, while the standard applied to the rest of the city can be maybe relaxed to three unrelated." This was in 2015-17, I'm sorry. On the backside, I took from page 77, highlighting a section, says, "A majority of survey respondents, 73% believe that the city should focus on efforts to rehabilitate the older housing units as opposed to construction new housing." Not occurring. "We have concurred that the rehabilitating of the low-value housing units should be one of the city's top housing priorities, and both because it will improve the supply of available units within the city as because it also improves perception about the quality of the city." Going down to my very last statement then, on page 85, it said, "It is our opinion that one important issue trumps all others in the first priority the city influences on the city, on the housing market: rehabilitation and replacement of low-value homes. We encourage the city to focus on this first and then proceed with other initiatives required city investment of staff, funding, resources as they become available."
Thank you, Armin. And just a point of clarification, both you and Cindy have checked the box that says "speaking in favor." Are you supporting the proposal?
I'm, the proposal has some alterations that are coming afterwards.
Yeah, we know about that. I just want to be clear for everybody here and for the future, the people who will see this, it's listed as speaking in favor. So you are indeed in favor of the proposal that's before the council at this moment in time.
Accepting two now to three is much better than the proposed later ideas of oversizing our community with rental properties.
Yep. And for those of you who may be looking at me like a deer in the middle of the road, we fully anticipate that there will be an amendment made to the existing proposal that would allow more unrelated people to live together. So I just wanted to be clear. And then Cindy, you're up next.
Hi. Thank you. Cindy Nabel, 1100 Phillips Street. And you've heard my rhetoric many times and very tired of it, I am sure. As many of us are tired of doing this, and I'm sure the city is too, about the same issue. Can't give it up completely. This'll be it for me. I'm not doing this anymore. I've got to stop. It's just too much. But it's important, and it's not just about where I live and my house. It's about how much our center of our city needs to be rehabilitated or built up more, as Armin said. I want to thank you. You'll be, tonight, you'll be voting on agenda item that will be affecting the zoning throughout the city of Stevens Point. In regards to occupancy allowances to remove the term "family" with a revision to "household entity," I want to state clearly, I am in favor of the city community director's proposal as posted in the agenda. However, there are, tonight will be a request that the, there will be an amendment maybe to the director's proposal. That amendment request will be to increase the allowable unrelated renters, maybe four, maybe three, and their dependents to live as one housing entity as a solution to the housing affordable issue. But in fact, tonight, you'll hear or did hear the presentation from the 2023 Housing Task Force following this, these public comments today, or earlier, before these comments, you heard that they're talking about either by square footage or by four or more people. I would also like to ask the council to also recognize the value of longtime residents, homeowners, and that spoke today. Former John Gardner, who was our former city planner, how much he is also stated that he feels it would be the wrong move for us to take four people or more into our, change of our zoning. Mary Ann Lachewski, Carol Milewski, you've heard from, are both owners of rental properties. They agree this would not be a way of making housing more affordable. I'd like to comment on a memo that was provided to the Housing Task Force regarding the solutions for Stevens Point housing affordability and for the homeless and for housing equity. The memo proposed that a zoning revision to increase occupancy allowance of four at the minimum unrelated individuals and their dependents would be an immediate and simple solution to impact the housing market at a low no cost to city residents. I disagree with this. The solution, simple no-cost solution, will eliminate all previous single-family zoning throughout the whole city. And there's no evidence with this that it will provide, this change will provide any more affordable housing. As the rent land people that have owner properties, they said if they're able to have more people, they would increase the rent. That was it already?
It was off for everyone.
Okay. The reality today is in market is that a change to four will only encourage more conversion of homes to rentals. If it's by square units, you'll have more living rooms, dining rooms changed into bedrooms. But only need to walk in several central city neighborhoods to find numerous houses that have been cannibalized and degraded, mostly within a half mile of the campus, and it continues to spread beyond. The rationale I just want to give you quickly is increasing the attraction opportunity for outside investors to convert current homes into rental properties for investment purposes. That would be a reason not to do this, and increases the difficulty for homeownership, competition, and has ability to purchase, ability to purchase affordable first-time homes, and also the comments that Armin made earlier about the 2017 city of Stevens Point study. I've just asked you to say, please think and look at several neighborhoods and their older housing stock, walk through them. Is this how the city council will best help improve the plight of the housing insecure? Or will it be a continued pathway that will increase an investor's ability to make a profit on homes most, and for those that are most vulnerable? Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. I think they both may have left already, but Bobby Joy and Jane Johnson both had registered to speak on this item too. They may have said their stuff earlier and left. And Anita, I'm going to apologize too, because if you're waiting for the license approval, that was done like two hours ago.
Were we approved?
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
It just occurred to me. Congratulations. So that was for Bow Wow Meow, and we did that in the consent agenda. It wasn't two hours ago. I'm exaggerating. It was...
Half an hour.
Yeah, half hour and 40 minutes ago, maybe. But it just occurred to me. I'm like, yeah, she's not here to talk about apartments. So I apologize for not clarifying that sooner, but you're good to go. And when can we expect Bow Wow Meow to open?
Yeah, so our ribbon cutting is June 7th, 10:30 a.m. We have our doors open right now before I come through, but we only have maybe 20% of our inventory right now.
Awesome. And that's at the old Blue Top type gas station, whatever it was called back. Shell station. There you go.
It's my side of town.
Yes.
So that's B R N one?
Yes. What you applied for was approved. Thank you very much. Have one ready for me. So Bobby Joy and Jane must have left. So their comments were earlier. You know, I keep overlooking the fact that some people don't do this all the time, and they might be waiting for an individual item. And since it was in the consent agenda, it wasn't individual, and it really just hit me as I look over at Anita, like, why is she still here?
Oh. So... But Mayor, we're entertaining anyway.
We are. We are. That's what Greg said.
Then he left.
So, back to the business at hand, because we're going to be here till morning. I need a...
Do the people online want to speak at all?
Nobody registered, so, no. So I need a motion first, because I know an amendment's coming, and you can do both.
I mean, it looks like horse apiece, right?
We need the motion first if we're going to follow the rules.
Right, but the motion could be to...
The motion could be to amend. We need a, we need a motion first, though. We need a motion on the item, and then you can motion to amend. That's the proper procedure. But you could do both.
I will make a motion.
All right. We have a motion by Shuda, seconded by Placence, to approve the item presented.
I would like to make an amendment, please.
Yes.
And the amendment would be the change, including the definition of the household entity. But because it would apply across the board, then we would not need the other paragraphs about plus dependent and owner occupied, he said, looking over at the development director to make sure that I understood. Because I think I did. No, I mean, I, that's what...
Okay. Why don't you hand out the proposed amendment, Director Karnowski, and I'll, I can read it?
Yes. This was Alder Shore's proposal.
There just wouldn't be a difference, there just wouldn't be a difference between owner occupied and not owner occupied. It's basically...
So you're looking at three across the board. That's the summary of what the amendment is. The actual words are here before you. But since there won't be, the proposed amendment allows three unrelated people in all zoning districts, all housing, without the restriction of owner occupancy. That would be the difference. Right now, the plan, the proposal is allowing three unrelated if it's owner occupied, but keeping two unrelated if it's not owner occupied.
Plus dependents.
Plus dependents. Yeah. I guess there's a, I don't completely understand why people think that, but I understand that we need to add dependents in there. Because if, if it's me and my daughter, and you and your daughter, you don't count as two unrelated people. Or you shouldn't. You're one unit. But I understand why the need is there. I just, it gets really, really confusing. Yes, Alder Fishler.
So is this discussion now?
So, wait a minute.
Yes.
I'll wait for you to say it.
My bad.
So we have a second by Zarazua on the amendment. Now, we can only talk about the amendment proposal. So go ahead.
Okay. So my only concern with the amendment is that it eliminates the owner occupied element of that, which I feel is important, especially when you're talking about investors exploiting our housing stock. Because if you are eliminating that, you know, owner occupied piece, then there's no restriction at all in terms of who might be not interested in buying if we do have that restriction. I know that enforcement's very much up in the air about that certain element, but I think that's something that's really important to keep in there, especially when we're talking about how many investors are coming and buying our housing stock for single-family homes. And I think that if we leave it out, it just sort of opens up that opportunity, because there's nothing restricting anyone from, you know, with our ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comments on the proposed amendment, Alder Christensen?
I guess in some ways I have some similar concerns to Alder Fishler. Listening to earlier committee meetings and commission meetings, there seemed to be a pretty strong consensus that owner occupation should have an advantage over absentee landlords. And the amendment would make it a level playing field for everyone, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that was the consensus among the different people that spoke. But the council's obviously able to do what they feel is best.
Sure. And I'm going to interject here, just because it's very, very important that you all consider this. A zoning change isn't like a standard ordinance change. For example, you recently allowed UTV use on some streets within the city. We could repeal that tomorrow. No harm, no foul. With a zoning change, anyone that's doing that, which you later prohibit, is grandfathered in. They're allowed to do it until that use stops happening. So this is a much more significant change when you're changing the zoning code. I'm always a big proponent of starting out small. By the way, we've had zero, zero complaints, zero accidents, zero OWIs on UTV use. Just saying. So I want to, but it's important that you recognize this, because if you make the change, you can't just, if it turns, if it goes disastrous, you can't change it back tomorrow or next month. People who are still doing it, or doing it at the time, continue doing that until the use changes. That's why we still have rooming houses that allow more unrelated, because when we change the original zoning code, those people, and as long as it's continued that use, they get to keep doing it forever. So, all right. Let's go with people who haven't spoken yet, and we'll start with Alder Placence.
I look at this as a pride of ownership. If you've got someone who owns a property in there, that's going to be better taken care of than having just the individuals there. It's been shown with Realtors as far as listing of properties and values. By taking the ownership out, it is really opening it wide up for potential for misuse.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet on the amendment? Alder Shuda?
I just sold the property because they went down this and got rid of the owner occupied. It changed the complete utter neighborhood completely, that I didn't even want to, I couldn't handle it anymore. So I fully support the director's original, not the amendment.
Thank you. Alder Person Lane?
Yeah. From my understanding of all this, I don't see reason to incentivize absentee landlords in any way in our community. And so if we can attach owner occupancy to increasing our housing stock, I'd say that's the right move to make as a community. It's also what I hear when I talk to people in my community. They want to see owner occupancy attached to this change.
Thank you. Alder Zarazua?
Yeah. Just knowing that, like Reverend Jane and others have already left, I just want to point out that we wanted this Housing Task Force to bring us recommendations. And what we have as the original was a compromise of that. This is, this amendment is closer to what that committee, that task force recommended. We're talking about, we understand that, you know, the benefits of having owner occupied housing in the community. We understand that we're a college town, but so many of our decisions are made around fear of college kids, landlords, and what that looks like. I just think that when we're talking about people need housing, and how do we change these laws, ordinances that are barriers to people regarding something as simple as saying, "I want to have my home have more roommates." I've had citizens call me over the years saying, "I've, I've found out that I can't have another renter in my house with me that I own." And so I understand saying the owner occupied makes it different. But homeownership is not a reality for a lot of people, and their path to that homeownership is living with roommates. So, I mean, I say that personally. I now own a home and still have all my roommates. And I don't think that homeownership automatically makes you a better neighbor or gives you more pride in your home. I think we have plenty of situations in town. I see a director shaking his head that there are people who own their homes and maybe don't take good care of those either, even if they live in it. So to me, this is addressing the recommendations from the Housing Task Force regarding how we take care of all the citizens in our community for them to have places to live.
Okay. Any other comments on the amendment proposal?
I mean, I do, but I also see the director there.
We're only doing with the council. We'll get through these comments, and then if the director has something to add, you can add it.
Thank you. So picking up on where my colleague Alder Zarazua left off, yes, we see this as an issue of helping people who are struggling in this rental market. The only way to help renters is to help landlords. I'm never in a hurry to help landlords. And I want to say that this is not an easy issue. I thought a huge amount about it, only made my mind up a couple, two or three weeks ago. I pushed the requirement of owner occupancy in the other two issues, AD, you know, the accessory units and the Airbnb, the tourist rooming houses. Because that, I saw that as a more of having homeowners have an option to make some income. That's how I saw that. But as Alder Zarazua just said, this is about the really hard time that we all know renters, moderate-income people are having, finding places. I mean, we're hearing about, you know, the proportion of their income going to rent, being way above the, you know, 30, 33% that, you know, is meant to be, and paying, you know, 40, 50% of paychecks. So here's the thing about the difference between owner occupied and not. They're going to be, our only tool is to increase supply. It's not, I'm exaggerating. It's not our only tool. It's our biggest tool. It's the most we can do. And if we only expand just for owner occupied, and mind you, let's also remember, this is the only community that has that such a stringent two-person limit. And if we only go to three in owner occupied, we're just not going to be adding that much to supply. That's kind of where I landed, was that only by letting non-owner occupied are we going to be meaningfully doing something to help those who are struggling.
Good question.
Thank you.
Over there. Would you be then in favor if we left the owner occupancy intact and made it up to four?
Thank you for the question. Part of being torn about this is realizing that how much change can a community reasonably digest? And that's why, to me, doing a bit more was the kind of the 3-3 for now. I don't know. And in line with what the mayor said about, you know, trying more modest for the moment, you know, I kind of landed on three for the moment, and rather than the four that was recommended by the task force.
Thank you. We had Alder Fishler. You had your, you know, you had your hand up though, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It started to blur to me, so I apologize.
That's okay. I know that in some communities, this is a real problem, just having their, their housing stock exploited by outside investors. And there's homeowner associations that actually have stepped up trying to restrict investors or investments to certain, a certain number of homes that can be rented, or the buyer would need to owner occupy at least six months out of the year. But to my knowledge, the city doesn't have any way of opposing those restrictions, you know, from our ordinance standpoint. And it's just, again, like, I think, you know, people have concerns about tourist rooming houses and things like that, and expanding it, and having too many of those going on. And I think this kind of also is kind of pointed toward that area as well, where, so if you don't have owner occupied, it just, I feel like it leaves us without any protection against, you know, how many, I mean, are we going to be okay as a community with just, you know, a lot of houses being snapped up by investors and just renting them out? Is that the kind of community, like, we foresee, like, in the future, ourselves being? Like, imagine 10 years from now, if we open this up, you know, and all of our housing stock is rentable, like, what does that look like as a city? That's my only concern.
Alder Shuda?
Just want to state that the community that I sold was not a college town. And I think, just make sure you're aware of the unintended consequences, which includes parking, where they park with all the people in the driveways. And the unintended consequences of changing people's neighborhoods that they've lived in for 30 years, and you're changing their neighborhood now after 30 years. I'd like you to keep that in mind.
Alder, key word?
Thank you. Like Alder Zarazua, I just wanted to thank the Housing Task Force for, I mean, this was a huge amount of time and energy and investment that they made. And I do recognize that this amendment by Alder Shore is closer to their intent. I think I am very much torn, because I don't think this is going to help as much as is hoped, and I don't think it's going to hurt as much as feared. We have no idea really how many people are following the existing code. I mean, so, I mean, I think this is one tool. As many people have said, the recommendations in the task force listed 10 action items, and this is one. I do, with my heart, I want to allow this amendment, but I do think there's a fair amount of support for what was written into the agenda, and that, I think, as Alder Christensen mentioned at another meeting, this is a small step of incremental change. And that, you know, we can still slowly move in another direction. I feel like there's other tools to use. There's things, yeah, like the land trusts that we, you know, new opportunities. And I just, I'm just not sure that this is going to help as much as is hoped, is my overall.
Okay. Alder, you follow?
It seems to me that by allowing landlords to increase the number of people, you're hoping that they will be altruistic and not maximize their profit. If investors know that they can cram four people, they're going to charge four people a lot of money. They're not going to say, oh, here's this poor person that needs a home. I'll only charge them a quarter of the rent I charged to the other three. That's not going to happen. They're going to maximize their profit any way they can, and it may not make it any more affordable than it is now. I think if it's tied to owner occupancy, you're going to find the houses are better maintained. I know I maintain mine because it's an investment for me. When I sell it, I want to sell it to the, you know, for the best price I can get. If I need to bring in a renter to help me put a roof on my house, I want to be able to do that. I don't want to rent it to four or five or six people. I would just, you know, use my Golden Girls analogy.
Okay, Blatch.
I've got some friends, yeah, or Maude, as it may be.
Maude wasn't a Golden Girl.
Only in her prior life.
Maude was Maude.
Now you made me lose my train of thought. Did that on purpose. With taxes going up, as you mentioned, we, our budget's based on property taxes. My mortgage in a year is about $6,000. My property taxes right now are $3,300. So I'm paying half of my mortgage in property taxes. I don't know what it's going to be like in five or 10 years, when I'm a lot older and a lot less able to do anything for extra money. It would be nice to have a couple of friends, who I consider much more family than my biological family.
No story.
Having found my original biological family.
That was the previous agenda item.
I'm grateful I was adopted. But anyway, yeah, I've got friends that are closer to me ever than my family, what's left of my family ever was. So I supported owner occupied, I just can't go to the landlord side.
Okay. Any other comments?
Can I have one minute, just on the charitableness of liberals?
You know Robert Schule says twice. Okay, go ahead.
Just on that, on that one point. So the, one of the knocks on liberals is that, like, we don't understand markets or we don't believe in markets. The point about the landlords isn't that, you know, that they'd be charitable, it's that they've got more competition. The pressure on them to keep rents lower rather than higher isn't about how, you know, they're dividing it up, it's about that there's more supply, like I say. So that was the last thing I wanted to say. Thank you.
Right. Any other comments? Sure, go ahead. President Christensen.
Yeah, I attended all the Housing Task Force meetings, just about every one of them. I do think therefore across the board was probably overshooting. I think I still, in my mind, maybe the best compromise would be a 4-3. Still providing a homeowner occupied advantage, but also raising the non-owner occupied from 2 to 3. This is hard, and I did, you know, I think that's maybe where we're going to end up eventually anyway. I guess my, my question is what's, and it speaks back to my earlier comment, of what incremental step makes the most sense to get from point A to point C? I don't have the answer.
Thank you, that wasn't helpful at all. I couldn't apologize.
Geez, thanks a lot. I was just being entertaining again.
It is tough, right?
It is tough. It really is, and I can see all the sides.
It's a comment, you're entitled to that, I appreciate that. But, you know, it's important that we talk about this, because, again, as I said, it's more critical with something like this, because if you decide to go backwards in six months, you already have left a scar, right, if it turns bad. Any other comments? And I'm going to turn it over to the director, Alder Person Lang.
I'd just like to say, as Counselor Keimer had mentioned, there's more than one action item on this task force thing that we need to be considering, it's just one, and this is just the start. And so if it gets us going in the right direction, I think this is a great start. And leave it there, I will be opposing the amendment.
All right. Director, whatever quick comments you have.
Oh, nothing's ever quick, so.
Yes, it is.
So a few things that I'd like to just point out as part of this overall discussion. First off, thank you for finally having this discussion. I think this is a long time coming in this community, and I'm thankful that we're at this point. Just for, you know, not, not all landlords and not all renters are terrible.
Yes.
Not all homeowners are great. The majority of our circuit court actions the last four years have been against homeowners because the conditions of their homes are deplorable. We have had a lot fewer issues taking things to circuit court with our renters, as an example. We do a lot of enforcement action with our renters. I think one thing that should really be thought of is, you know, whether you go with the 3-2 or the 3 across the board option, the likelihood that we continue to add student housing within the core of the community is highly unlikely to occur. There's a number of reasons for that, namely that we've added market-rate student housing off of Maria Drive, and it's becoming more and more difficult for landlords, whether they're local or out of state or out of the area, to make a profit, given the current housing market, on student rentals. I think that's a really important thing. So we're not adding any more student housing to the core. The ones that our grandfathered in will continue to operate until such time that they either are, lose their legal non-conforming status or their grandfathered status. It typically is 12 months of no longer occupying that specific property with the number of users. Or we do the investment in our rental conversion program, which we have seen success. We're seeing more homes, now, it's very slow, this is a decades-long process, to flip these properties back to owner occupied or non-student rental occupied. City staff has no objection to 3 across, and in fact, I have been torn over the last several months on what makes the most sense for this community. Again, either option you go with at least moves us in the right direction. But if we look at the 3 across, which is the amendment that you're going to be voting on later, think about it outside the confines of student rental. We have teachers in this community who come to Stevens Point, who are making $30,000, $35,000 a year, who can't afford the $1,200 a month rent. And our zoning code is prohibiting young professionals from living together to make ends meet. So three student teachers, three teachers, sorry, it's late, wouldn't be able to rent together under the proposed 3-2 option. We would be one of the few communities, in fact, Madison just got rid of their owner occupied condition as part of their family definition, and just went to, I think it's five across the board. But they've also got some specific zoning regulations, especially around the university. I like the 3 across, I do, I think that that is the right move for this community. However, if we go with the 3-2 option, some movement is better than no movement, because what we have now doesn't work. And I think that's all I'm going to say about this. It's late, I don't get a lot of sleep anymore. So either way, staff is supportive of either one. We do, your city planning staff does support the 3 across, if that's the right, you choose to go, because I think it makes a bigger long-term impact as opposed to the 3-2 option, which is before you this evening. Plan Commission's talked about this probably five times, but again, I'm thankful that it's finally being brought up here, so.
Thank you. And for those of you who don't know, Director Knasey recently became a father to a wonderful baby girl.
Yes.
So, yeah, he's not probably getting a lot of sleep. All right, we're going to vote on the amendment. The amendment is the, basically, the 3 across the board. If you are in favor of 3 across the board, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow?
No.
Fishler?
No.
Ling?
No.
Shuda?
No.
Niebon?
No.
Plazans?
No.
Burr?
No.
Zarzua?
Yes.
Keimer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
I know there was three, so I'm going to say it failed. What was the final count?
Yep, 3-7.
3-7?
Yes, 3-8.
3, okay, you can say, that doesn't add up. It's late for her, too. The motion to amend fails. Now before you is the original motion with no amendments, which is basically the 3 owner occupied, 2 not. Is there any discussion on that? Then I will ask the clerk to please call that roll. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no.
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Zarzua?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plazans?
Yes.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Ling?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Before we move on to the next agenda item, I have to say something, because I am personally embarrassed. Keely, I know your name, but I feel bad because I tried to address everybody in a more formal manner here, rather than office talk. It's not that I forgot your name.
I think Keimer and Keely sounds very...
You're ginger and keely. And I knew you when you weren't Fishler, so there's that, too. So it's not that I forgot your name, it's, I'm trying to remember, and I caught myself doing it several times where I call someone Mary, or...
I take medicine for that.
Whatever you got. I just, I try and keep things formal, and I catch myself not doing it, because it should be a little more formal here. And I should address you by titles, and I apologize. Now, where are we in the agenda? I think we're on 11, right? All right. Item number 11 is a request from the city of Stevens Point to enter into an electric underground easement agreement with Wisconsin Public Service Corporation for a property located at 4401 State Highway 66 and two unaddressed parcels off of State Highway 66, with the parcels identified in your packet. So moved. Thank you. Second. Discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Ling?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Ling?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 13 is to award Project 23.025 the cash playground resurfacing to Adventure Turf in the not-to-exceed amount of $225,975. I've been asked for the park director to inform you that the turf will be a blue and black color, which is what's going to happen to the children if they fall off the playground and we don't resurface. It is a blue and black color.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Moved by Keimer, seconded by Burr. Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Ling?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Plazans?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 14 is approval of the city purchasing parcel number 281-24, whatever else is in your packet, along Second Street North, for a total cost of $40,000, a purchase price plus closing costs. And I want to point out that that was approved and recommended approval by the Plan Commission earlier this evening. Alder Christensen?
I make that motion?
I second.
Thank you, seconded by Morrow. Discussion?
It's very exciting.
Yes, excellent.
It is. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 14 is approval of the city purchasing parcel number 281-24, whatever else is in your packet, along Second Street North, for a total cost of $40,000, a purchase price plus closing costs. And I want to point out that that was approved and recommended approval by the Plan Commission earlier this evening. Alder Christensen?
I make that motion?
I second.
Thank you, seconded by Morrow. Discussion?
It's very exciting.
Yes, excellent.
It is. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Zarzua?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plazans?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Ling?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 16, we did 15 already, is a disallowance of a claim from American Family Insurance on behalf of Williams Beaver Dorf, Beavers Dorf, for vehicle damage due to a parking block. That's the big concrete thing.
I move denial of that claim.
Thank you. Seconded, seconded by Ling. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
There were two pictures of the concrete blocks, which is the one that caused the problem.
I don't know, but I don't know that it's...
Because one looked a lot like it was an issue that you could see that it was cleaned up, all the concrete was broken around from the metal posts, so it was something like someone should have had knowledge of that, because someone did clean it up, where the other one just has a little piece of metal coming off the top.
I can't answer that question for you, Alder Person. That usually goes through our insurance provider, and our provider...
They provided both of those for the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
But I can tell you that our provider reviewed it, and their recommendation is also to deny. Any other comments? Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Ling?
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Plazans?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plazans?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Ling?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 13 is to award Project 23.025 the cash playground resurfacing to Adventure Turf in the not-to-exceed amount of $225,975. I've been asked for the park director to inform you that the turf will be a blue and black color, which is what's going to happen to the children if they fall off the playground and we don't resurface. It is a blue and black color.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Moved by Keimer, seconded by Burr. Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Ling?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Plazans?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 14 is approval of the city purchasing parcel number 281-24, whatever else is in your packet, along Second Street North, for a total cost of $40,000, a purchase price plus closing costs. And I want to point out that that was approved and recommended approval by the Plan Commission earlier this evening. Alder Christensen?
I make that motion?
I second.
Thank you, seconded by Morrow. Discussion?
It's very exciting.
Yes, excellent.
It is. Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 16, we did 15 already, is a disallowance of a claim from American Family Insurance on behalf of Williams Beaver Dorf, Beavers Dorf, for vehicle damage due to a parking block. That's the big concrete thing.
I move denial of that claim.
Thank you. Seconded, seconded by Ling. Discussion?
Yes, sir. There were two pictures of the concrete blocks, which is the one that caused the problem.
I don't know, but I don't know that it's...
Because one looked a lot like it was an issue that you could see that it was cleaned up, all the concrete was broken around from the metal posts, so it was something like someone should have had knowledge of that, because someone did clean it up, where the other one just has a little piece of metal coming off the top.
I can't answer that question for you, Alder Person. That usually goes through our insurance provider, and our provider...
They provided both of those for the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
But I can tell you that our provider reviewed it, and their recommendation is also to deny. Any other comments?[1563.33] which would have been 18 votes at the time.
Three-quarters.
And 19 votes.
Didn't I say so?
You said two-thirds.
Oh, did I? I'm sorry. I meant three-quarters. It would have been 18 votes at the time because one alder, or once, one county board supervisor had resigned. So normally, they would need 19, one resigned. They only need 18. That failed. The Space and Properties Committee last week then took up the resolution for the downtown site and also to consider moving the library to 1039 Ellis Street. The motion that was approved was to review or look at options to repurpose 1039 Ellis Street. I spoke without making sure that they knew I wasn't speaking for the council authority, but that the city has always been a partner in the library, has no intention of changing the lease when it comes due late next year. So I don't, I'm not, I mean, they were being proactive, I suppose, looking at the lease coming up, wondering what should we do with it. But I explained that the city had no intention of altering the lease. It's a benefit to the downtown. We all see that, and I don't think anyone here would disagree with me. Some may say that they chose to put that agenda on the item, so, or agenda item on, so they could take 1039 Ellis Street, which was purchased for the sole purpose of a downtown justice center, taking that off of the possible footprint of any proposal. Regardless, that motion, or the resolution for the downtown site was not acted upon. It was, so, in effect, someone could bring it back next month, or six months, or a year from now, but it was not acted on. So they took no action approving it or denying it. At that time, because it really seems like some on the county just weren't given all of the information that was available for the downtown site. Rather than five acres, Director Knosky, myself, and others put together all of the available land that the city has put up before. No private property was included in this, and some private property would be available. But it turns out that there's more than 12 acres, and at least in 2015, we had a design on the downtown site that worked. We think that by revisiting the downtown location with all of the available site, and might I add that their downtown master plan did not include the 53,000 square feet that we currently have in the county city building, nor the full parking lot that's across the street from the courthouse. In their downtown master plan, it didn't include that.
Or the annex.
Or the annex. The, well, the annex was actually included, but it was slated to be torn down so they could make green space. We believe that we have an ability or an opportunity here to revisit that downtown site, and I offered up at the Space and Properties Committee that I would take it to council, to ask for some money to do that, and hope that the county will, I mean, the county will be at the table on every one of the meetings. But we hope to provide an alternative that meets all of the county's criteria, but still utilizes the downtown site for the facility. So what you have before you is a request for not to exceed $50,000. We have two architects that have given us quotes in that range to do the work. We're asking for the authorization of $50,000 to have an architect work with the county and the city, using the county's standards and guidelines, to put together a redesign of the downtown layout utilizing all of the available land, and should there be any land transactions, of course, that would have to come to you as well. But utilizing all of the land that has been previously put out, whether it's city-owned or streets, things like that, vacation of streets. Yes?
My only question is, so if we spend the money to do this, has the county agreed to, if, to vote on a plan if we were to move forward with it?
They have not. So you bring up a very good point. We talked about this ad nauseam at our meeting today. There's no guarantee that the county will approve this. There's no guarantee that the county will even acknowledge this. However, I really think that if a design can come together that meets all of the county's requirements in the downtown location, and it will very likely come in cheaper because of the redesign and the fact that we don't necessarily need to tear down the annex building for, for one, or that we can repurpose the existing county space, which is 73% of 52,000 and some odd square feet. So, yes, I'd say it's a risk, but I think that if the county is presented with that plan, it would certainly be hard for them not to acknowledge it and act on it. We'll go, which way you want to go? Because you had the floor.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, follow up. Okay. My, okay, so my only concern about that is because we had the county here, and we explained to them that we would give them all of the property, plus extra property to work with, and they did not want to move forward with that. So like, they had their mind made up already, and so my concern is that we spend the money to do this, even if we come up with this amazing plan, they will still reject it.
My concern as well. I agree. It's taking a risk.
Right.
But I think, as I said, it would be very hard to have a plan presented publicly that meets all of their requirements and will likely come in cheaper. I think it would be very hard for the county board supervisors to publicly say, yeah, it doesn't matter, we're still going with what we want.
Yeah, and just, just for.
Go ahead.
Clarification on Alder Fischler's comments. The downtown plan that was proposed by the county was done prior to, and with very, actually, no city input. And the proposal that was put together, our reaction to that proposal was to put the street on the table, all the land on the table, and so the county board hasn't seen other options that would include all of that 12 and a half or so acres. This would allow them, as the mayor had mentioned, to see an alternative site design for the downtown, because quite frankly, in the nearly decade that I've been an urban planner, I have not seen a lot of really good site designs, and this one's probably one of the worst, because you can't push the entire building to the north property line and then claim, you can only go up with expansions. There's, the right way to do it would be to place the property, or place the development as center into the parcel as much as possible, and expect additions based on that, and that gives you more flexibility. Again, the county hasn't seen that option, and in fact, if you look at your agenda pack of the last few pages, this is the city's conceptual plan put together by your city planning staff. And so we think that the current site design, although presented as one of the best options of the county board, we think that site design's doing a disservice to the county, and that's why we're willing to say, let's look at everything, including vacation of streets, and that we're willing to cover that cost, because we do believe that this is a really important part of what we're trying to achieve here.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes sense.
So I'm going to go over to Keemer.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Zarazua.
Would this architectural design include a cost estimate? Because it seems like a big part of the blockage at county is the cost. So would that be a part of this?
So we won't have an exact, but yes, we are much more able to provide a reasonable estimate, knowing where the location is, the square footage. Utilities are, in a greenfield site, we don't even know where they are, so we can't give you a price. But we know the utilities already exist there. Water and sewer already exist there. The roads already exist there. So we will be able to come up with a pretty good price.
Thank you.
Yes. Let's, I'm sorry, Zarazua, I said first, and then we'll go to Christiansen.
So, let's just say we do an awesome job, we get an amazing plan, and then the county board doesn't want to look at it, and it goes into the trophy case that we have of eight million plans. Will a plan still be good in, say, two years when we have a new county board?
In all likelihood.
Is it two years?
Yes.
Okay.
So, no, it's actually 2024. You could potentially have an entire new county board in April of 2024. That's when the county board election is. But in all likelihood, next summer, it will be fine, unless some things significantly change, suddenly a spike in crime, or a crazy number of court cases, or maybe it's a decline. So unless something significant changes, it's very unlikely that the design would need any modifications of significance for the next several years at least. Apparently, the 2015 design is thrown away because that didn't matter, but, I'm sorry, was that allowed? Alder Zarazua, you still have the floor.
Okay. And then, just wanted to clarify where the funding would come from.
Well, I left that up to Cory. Gary, are you prepared to answer that? We'll have the deputy comptroller treasurer come to the lectern and see if we can take it out of petty cash.
No. Cory had said that it'll either have to come out of fund balance or borrowing. We wouldn't know until we know how we end up at the end of the year.
Right. And fund balance is our savings account. Borrowing, we would be required then to pay some sort of interest on top of that, but I would, I wouldn't push for fund balance. Alder Christiansen?
I just wanted to point out that in the city's proposed plan, that it eliminates the need for parking garage, that they have, which would more than make up the difference.
I think it was 43 million.
43 million, and their, the greenfield proposal was only $10 million cheaper than the downtown. When this revised proposal would eliminate 43 million, plus the fact that they, it includes them maintaining the use of the annex, so all that square footage would no longer have to be built at $900 a square foot. They would be reutilizing that, so the chances of this proposal coming in significantly, significantly more economical, it would be challenging for them not to consider it. But it's their purview, obviously. It is their decision.
Thank you. Alder Placence.
Is there a motion on the floor?
There is not.
Okay. All right. So are we voting on this tonight?
I would like you to vote on it tonight, yes.
Okay. All right. And looking back, what's that?
Hang on. We'll get over to there in a second.
And looking back on what the county did as far as their voting, 15 to 10 as far as for the greenfield site, they'd only need to get three to change that, to pull it to a majority. But 19 votes that are needed for the financing, if you've got 15 people that are against it on the greenfield, you've got to turn nine votes around to get down to the six. That can only be in the negative. And I don't know if, I think this is a big gamble, and I think it's a waste of $50,000. They've spoken, I've talked to a couple of the supervisors for the county, and they're frustrated because they can't get anywhere with anybody, and there are certain people who just are not going to want it downtown. And out of that 15, how many of them are the ones that don't want it downtown, and that shoots it down right away? Then you get to the financing, if you get by that, and then you've got to get a finer number. And I just think that it's going to be a waste of money if we go at this. This could come back again in two years, and we could put another plan together at that point when they're ready to make a move.
Yes, you're right. But I can tell you that several of the county board, I think everybody on county board agrees something needs to be done. I don't want to speak for any other county board supervisor, but there's also a theory that the greenfield site had the majority, so that's what they went with. I think that if we meet, if we provide a plan that meets all of the county criteria downtown, and the need still exists clearly, and especially if we can come in less than the proposed greenfield site, which we feel is likely, that since everyone agrees that something needs to be done, and we come up with a plan that's cheaper and still meets all of their guidelines, I think other than the people who are just adamant about not having it downtown would swing.
What if we were to wait until after next year's vote and then propose a plan?
We could. We could certainly do that.
Because right now, we're up against, where it's, I don't see it happening with the people that are in there right now.
We could. The reason I ask you to do this tonight is because there's been a need since 2009 for some additional courtroom security, and since 1997 for some additional jail space. The need doesn't go away. The only thing that happens is the price goes up. So the sooner we act, the better off we are as a county paying for this. And as I said, if we propose a plan, two years from now, it'll probably still be pretty good.
But is that jail need, space needed for the city, or is it needed for the county?
Needed for the county. City doesn't have a chair.
So it's not our issue?
It is not.
Okay. So it should be looked at that way, that we're throwing $50,000 into, and what you're giving me as far as a reason for is a county reason. It's not a city reason.
You are absolutely correct, but I would submit that I pay county taxes. So do you.
Yes.
So does everybody at this table. So it's equally our issue.
When I get something voted in, one last comment.
I get it. I understand what you're saying.
If I want to get something accomplished here, I've got to get five other people to vote with me. We're trying to go and spend $50,000 trying to get not anybody here in this room, but people on the county to try to change their mind based on that. And that's a big gamble.
It is.
If I was in a personal business situation, where I was an owner of a business, I wouldn't go down this road. Okay?
We'll go to Fischler, and then Lang.
So.
And Morrow.
I was just curious, like, as to the timing of this, like, why, why it was put on our agenda for council instead of, like, the finance committee, for example? So why, why the urgency?
Because we had made this offer to the county on Tuesday.
But did they?
We couldn't certainly wait till next month.
But did they accept the offer, I guess?
The words, and I'm, I believe I'm quoting County Executive Pavalski, but the video would show for sure. He says, "We were, we'll always be ready to look at anything." That's the look I had.
What, what does that mean specifically, though?
There is zero commitment from the county.
There's always a chance.
To look at this. They did imply that they will look at all designs.
Okay, I mean.
So you're right. You don't have a commitment, and they could toss it in the garbage, and we're out $50,000. But as I said, if we do a design that meets all of the requirements, I think they'd be hard pressed to do that, because they have voters to answer for, just like we do.
The idea behind it is trying to build capacity for the downtown site. The city putting not only property and street vacation up, but also funds to do a more appropriate site design, I think goes a long way, and my conversations with county administration indicate that they're open to having this conversation. In a way, us paying for this forces us at the table, right? And we want to be at the table. I mean, it's important for the development of the downtown that the city staff and the mayor is in the same room with county staff and the county executive, whereas previously, because the city wasn't paying that directly, we were not part of those conversations. So that's another way to look at it.
So we're paying to be at the table, pretty much. $50,000.
It's a nice plate.
If, if they choose to have a table.
I don't know. I haven't had dinner yet, so this table talk.
Table materializes.
Alderperson Lang, and then alderperson Morrow.
So, we've had a couple plans in the past for a downtown site, as I understand it. We're going to spend maybe $50,000 to do another study and give another proposal. There's no guarantee that the county accepts it, but we've needed this thing done in our county for close to 30 years going from now, okay? Are we basically failing in our duties to not present them a plan? If we, like, if we have to work with them, if that is our partner, is it our duty to bring forward a proposal as a city?
That's kind of your question to answer. I would, I would be clear.
I'm asking this to my fellow.
Be clear. We're not, we're not paying for a study.
Right.
We're paying for a design. We're not going to do a study. Everybody is in agreement that the need exists.
Yeah.
So this would just be a design.
Okay.
Alderperson Morrow.
As, as a former chairman Holman said, the trophy case of studies is, all, as all the persons there, Zarazua, said, that's one of the concerns that I have, and the comment that you made too, well, there's always a chance. I mean, going to those meetings, it was very obvious that the county board was really pushing toward, had no interest in a downtown, in a downtown site. I mean, there's, I think, when Brian was trying to give them facts, the mayor was trying to give them facts, facts didn't seem to really matter. They were pretty hell-bent on it, and it didn't seem like, no matter what was presented to them, it really made any, I mean, it didn't really change any hearts and minds. And that's, and that's, that's one of the concerns that I have, especially with the current, with, with the current board. I think after the next election, I think might be, might be more of a chance, but right now, I think it'd just be thrown into a trash heap by, because we would have the best plan, but I don't think it would matter.
Okay. Sorry. Over on this side, we'll go to Shore, and then back to Zarazua.
There's plenty of reason to be skeptical that this is building towards a conclusion. On the other hand, it feels like the tempo and the intensity of the discussion really has picked up. I see the rigidity in their position, just like everybody else does. But I also have my question about whether that's sustainable politically. They were not happy with the media coverage of this. Why weren't, why weren't they happy? Because they felt the heat. So I tend to be a believer in the politics of looking like the more reasonable side of the argument, and so I actually think that this could apply the kind of pressure that it's intended to.
I do need to point out, too, that both Director Knosky and myself have been asked for greenfield sites that the city would be willing to sell, and that was as recently as this past week. So the county, some in the county are still actively looking for a greenfield site. If we get a site, then they will have a better idea of what that might cost, too, but I still think it's going to be a little cost prohibitive out there. Alderperson Zarazua, and then.
Can you get one more in?
We'll, we'll get one more in, but I want to make sure that anybody who hasn't spoken yet, and that's alderperson Niebon, has a chance to do so. So let's go to alderperson Niebon, and then, actually, alderperson Burr hasn't spoken yet either. So if you want to say anything, you can, but don't feel pressure. I just want to make sure that the people who haven't spoken get first dibs, so we'll go to alderperson Niebon.
Well, everybody knows how I feel about urban planning. It's very cool. I kind of, when I thought about this, I thought, man, this is just throwing good money after bad. But the way we've been talking about it tonight, it occurred to me, this is maybe a $40,000 or $50,000 investment in our downtown. So maybe that's a better way to look at it. It's not 50 grand for a study. It's an investment in keeping our downtown vibrant and vital. And yeah, it's a crapshoot. You know, it's like, you pays your money and you takes your chance. But it's, it's better to pay for the ride than to stand on the sideline and watch somebody else have a good time and get the benefit. So I was not going to support this, but I think I've changed my mind, because I think it's really an investment in our downtown.
Thank you. Alder Zarazua, then Placence, unless Alder Burr wants to speak.
I like what Mary said.
That's good. That's good enough.
What Alder Niebon said.
See, it's not that easy, is it?
No, it's not.
Alder Zarazua, then Alder Placence.
I guess one piece of this for me, like, I, I just feel I want more input from constituents and, like, how other people feel about us looking at this, and maybe some more conversations with county board supervisors. And, I mean, I know. I guess one piece of this for me, like, I, I just feel I want more input from constituents and, like, how other people feel about us looking at this, and maybe some more conversations with county board supervisors. And, I mean, I know that it is, I, I agree with a lot of the things that we've talked about here, both for and against this. I mean, there's a lot of things to consider here, so I just feel that more time would be beneficial.
Okay. Alder Placence?
When this went to the county for the, for their vote a week or two ago, what did they have from, did they have a plan from us as far as the show, what was going to be in all the location? Did they have the map that we had when we looked at our meetings last month that showed the breakdown of what was going to be in all these places?
They were...
It seems like someone dropped the ball. If they, if they're asking for something like this now...
They're not asking.
Well, they're not asking, but we're trying to provide it, but why didn't we provide it in the first place?
Because we didn't, we didn't have $50,000 to put the plan together in the first place. What, what all the, Alder Person, or, sorry, what all the county board supervisors got was what the community development staff put together, which was a very rough sketch showing what we felt were some of the significant shortfalls of the proposed downtown master plan that the county was looking at. So while they saw it, it was never officially presented to county board. We emailed each supervisor individually with that sketch. This is formalizing it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. It's getting late.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, if you are in favor of authorizing the $50,000, wait.
We don't have a motion?
We don't even have a motion. So I'd be looking...
It's all moved.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion, just to restate your motion, Alder Person Lang. You are authorizing funds up to $50,000 for an architect for an alternative design to the county's downtown master plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct, and we had a second by Shore. Any further discussion? If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
No.
Fischler.
No.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
No.
Niebon.
Aye.
Placence.
No.
Burr.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
I think, seven-four, the motion does pass. We will present it, present it to the county and get those put together. With that, our agenda is exhausted, and we are adjourned